From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truckston Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
At some point in time, though, you're in your coffee. I'm gonna rush up, but I've been offered a little water. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Board to reconvene. Good morning, Madam Clerk. Would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Gleason.
Supervisor Scrivner.
Here.
Supervisor Maggert.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez. Here. Thank you and good morning. Welcome to the Tuesday, September 1, 2020, meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We will begin today's meeting with the flag salute led by Supervisor Zach Scrivner. Following the flag salute, please remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer.
Place your hand over your heart, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to call Mr. Nick Cullen, Director of Animal Services, to come out with our Pet of the Week. Mr. Cullen, you always bring the cutest little fellas. Oh.
Good morning.
Oh, my goodness. Who do you have?
This morning, we have with us Mowgli.
Mowgli?
Yes. Mowgli is about a year and a half old Doxy mix. She, he, is about 14 pounds. He actually was in our foster care program. Foster returned him because he was marking in the house.
Oh.
But he's gonna need a forever home, somebody who's willing to invest the time and resources to make sure that he becomes a forever pet for the family.
Oh, my goodness. How precious. $85, covers all his vaccinations and spay and neuter.
Spay and neuter, vaccines, license for a year.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you, Nick. He is so precious. Good luck, Mowgli. Great name.
Is that Jungle Book? It's Mowgli Jungle Book.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. As we have stated previously, the County of Kern has provided notice that as a result of the declared federal, state, and local emergencies due to the COVID-19 pandemic and in light of the Governor's order, this Board of Supervisors meeting is not physically open to the public. Testimony and general public comment can be given through email or telephone to the Clerk of the Board prior to today's meeting, and live comments through teleconference will be heard during the meeting. Before considering the consent agenda, Chief Deputy County Counsel Kendra Graham, will you please report on action taken in closed session on August 25, 2020, at 9:00 a.m.?
Yes, good morning. Last week, on August 25, your Board met in closed session on items 103 and 104 following the conclusion of the morning session. There was no afternoon session, and there is no reportable action.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Graham. We will begin by considering the consent agenda. All items listed with a capital C, capital A are above the item are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding an item or items on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to a vote being taken on the consent agenda. A member of the Board may remove any item from consent, and it will be considered in its listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the Board concerning the item before action is taken. A member of the public may also comment on any closed session items. Consent matters begin on page two, and they include items 1 through 6. On page three, items 9 through 14. On page four, items 15 through 22. On page five, items 23 through 31. On page six, items 32 through 33, and items 35 through 40. On page seven, items 41 through 47. On page eight, items 49 through 56. On item 53 of page eight, there is a change. Instead of 731-2020, it should read 371-2020. So rather than 731, it's 371-2020. And finally, on page nine, items 57 through 61. Madam Clerk, are there any public comments submitted on the consent agenda items?
We do have comment on items 1 and items 2, and I'd like to offer this time for Stacy Kuahara from Behavioral Health and Recovery Services to come up and provide comments on item 1, the Suicide Prevention Month proclamation. And following Stacy will be Allison Burrows, also a deputy director from Behavioral Health, who is going to provide some comments on item 2, which is proclaiming recovery month in Kern County. So we'll hear from Stacy first.
Wonderful. Good morning. Very nice to see you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, CEO Also. So I'm in front of you today to recognize September as National Suicide Awareness Prevention Month. This is an observance we hold to remind everybody that suicide is preventable, it responds to care and treatment, and to reinforce that people who need help need access to care. They need not to be stigmatized. Most people overcome suicidal thoughts or suicidal acts and have meaningful, productive lives. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death for people between the ages of 10 and 34 nationwide. It's the 10th-leading cause of death overall. Nationally, the suicide rates have been increasing during the COVID pandemic. However, locally, we've not seen this trend occur here in Kern County. As of June 30 of this year, we've had 60 people within our county die by suicide. So this is a lower-average trend than we've had in previous years, and it's putting us on track to have fewer suicides this year despite the pandemic and other national trends increasing. I'd like to highlight our Certified Suicide Prevention Crisis Hotline. During the last fiscal year, they responded to over 34,000 calls to the hotline. That's a tremendous impact when you consider the number of lives they're saving and people they're helping during this time of crisis. So just as an example, we had a call where somebody tried to commit suicide by overdose. This gentleman woke up, he knew where he was, but he didn't know his address. So he called our hotline for help. Because they didn't, he didn't know his exact address, our hotline worker kept the gentleman on the call and was able to contact law enforcement and coordinate with law enforcement to pinpoint where he was and get law enforcement out there to help him and bring him in for services in need. I mean, that's just one example of the kinds of incredible work our team's doing on a daily basis to serve everybody in our community. Our mobile evaluation team, the MET team, is providing in-person and virtual services covering all of Kern County. They've responded to over 4,000 calls last year. And our psychiatric evaluation center, the Bakersfield Center, served over 9,500 individuals. And our Ridgecrest Center served over 750 individuals. We're really pleased that we're offering services in East Kern, recognizing the value of those direct services throughout our county. Kern BHRS is focused on community outreach, education, school-based prevention intervention, and we've been targeting prevention community-wide. Examples of our programs in schools include partnering with the Kern County Superintendent of Schools to make a DVD with a manual training our school staff in suicide prevention. The More Than Sad videos being used in more than 91 classrooms and reaching over 3,000 students. We're teaching applied suicide intervention skills training to school counselors, and the school districts have added our suicide prevention hotline on the back of all of the school ID cards this year. We're operating groups now virtually to survivors of suicide loss. And when somebody dies by suicide, we have a survivor outreach team that outreaches to the family members to offer them support following their loss. So to recognize this month as National Suicide Awareness Prevention Month, we're gonna be starting tonight by lighting up this building, the Kern County Administrative Building, in purple and teal tonight at 7:45. We're gonna be holding a virtual community forum on September 10 for World Suicide Prevention Day, and we'll be having a Chalk Walk, Chalk Walk scavenger hunt, partnering with Creative Crossing in our Oleander neighborhood from September 11 through the 13th. We're also gonna be doing extensive social media outreach in our social media platforms. So I'd like to end by reminding everybody of the crisis hotline. It's operational 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, can be reached at 800-991-5272. And I'd like to close by reminding something that Ellen Egger, our hotline supervisor, says. She says, "Suicide is everybody's business." I was thinking about something that I recall, I've heard Kevin Hines speak about his own suicide attempt story. He talked about being on the bus, traveling to the Golden Gate Bridge, getting ready to jump off the bridge, and he talks about thinking to himself, "If somebody asks me how my day is going, if somebody looks at me or says something, then I won't do it. I won't commit suicide." So I was thinking about that, and I was just reminded that for all of us, the small things really do matter. Small acts of kindness, small acts of patience, small acts of caring, they're small things to us, but they can make a tremendous difference to somebody else. So I'd like to thank you, and always I'm available for questions if you have any.
Thank you for that excellent presentation and for your professionalism and concern for this area. I do think as a society, we're getting better about addressing this issue and being honest about it, how pervasive it is, and how many aspects of even what would appear to be normal life are impacted by these realities. And so the more we talk about it, the more concerned, competent professionals like yourself connecting the dots, you know, I think we can really have an impact. I'm so pleased to see Kern County's numbers moving in a different direction than the country, because this is our community, and we can influence it profoundly through very small ways.
Yeah.
When we're, you know, when we're good faith players and care about each other, even a little bit. So thank you so much. I'm very encouraged by your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I love your jewelry separately.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I'm here today to speak to you about September Recovery Month. September marks the annual celebration of National Recovery Month. The observance is intended to highlight that appropriate treatment services can enable those with mental health and substance use disorders to live healthy and rewarding lives. Now, in its 31st year, Recovery Month celebrates the gains made by those living in recovery and provides an opportunity for treatment providers across the nation to reflect on positive strides and their plans to make recovery services more accessible. In Kern County, the recovery community remains strong even in the face of the COVID-19 pandemic, and we are finding new ways of delivering treatment and support to the community. We continue to utilize evidence-based practices, such as the American Society of Addiction Medicine's Levels of Care model, and maintain countywide access through outlying treatment providers and our gateway phone screenings. We also maintain a robust outpatient treatment system inclusive of narcotic treatment programs. Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services saw over 4,600 new admissions into substance use treatment in the past year, with almost 50% of those individuals successfully discharging from treatment. With the numbers entering treatment initially declining under COVID, we are now seeing these bounce back. COVID-19 and subsequent funding impacts have presented challenges in the past few months, but we've also seen many positive strides made with our substance use disorder treatment continuum. This has included the addition of two recovery sobering stations, one in Delano and one in Bakersfield. These centers provide a safe site for individuals to sober up and enter treatment for mental health or substance use disorders. We've also seen an increase in residential drug treatment programming, additional services for the homeless population, expanded medical detox options, as well as medication-assisted treatment through primary care providers. We are also continuing to implement strategies identified in the countywide opioid plan. In our outpatient system, we continue to see inspiring stories of recovery. One such story involved a young man who had been successfully attending college and working prior to the death of his mother. The event had a significant impact on him, and through his grief, he turned to heroin. His substance use led to several arrests, and after his last arrest, he was placed on the electronic monitoring program. He entered residential outpatient treatment, during which time he realized the impact of addiction on his life. After completing his residential program, he reunited with his partner and two young children. He's now employed, and together they're able to support their young family. And I'm pleased to say, as of last week, he had attained over 600 days of sobriety. Recovery is a difficult journey, and this journey begins in different circumstances and settings, whether that's through interventions at a recovery station or homeless shelter, through self-help groups, a primary care doctor, faith-based program, or a more traditional treatment setting. The paths may be different, but they have important factors in common, including learning to establish new patterns, regaining a sense of self, connecting to others in recovery, having hope for the future, and most importantly, the recognition that individuals with substance use and mental illness can be well and be healthy and productive members of our community. Despite the challenging situation we see ourselves in, recovery, hope, and healing are happening in Kern County. I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors and all of our community partners who play a vital role in creating opportunities for recovery. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
How many detox beds do we have in Kern County?
I don't have the actual total number in front of me, but we know that Good Samaritan Hospital has added Medi-Cal detox beds recently, so we're really pleased about that option.
So the two other locations you mentioned, I remember we had none before.
Right.
Other than the Friesy House, sort of, under, you know, very limited circumstances. But the need for a detox center has always been profound. And I mean, I think we need tons more bed space, obviously, but having something is such a big improvement.
Right. And we are under our Drug Medi-Cal Organized Delivery System waiver. We do intend to add more medical detox beds in the community as well.
That is fantastic. Well, thank you for that effort. I mean, that has been such a huge gap in our treatment for so long, and it really such a necessary piece that it's hard to make any real progress when we don't have that as a component of the process.
Sure.
So I really appreciate your efforts. I mean, it's, I think what you're doing is God's work. It's really tough. It is, I think, the hardest work that's out there. I'm a former public defender, and this is, this is, you know, the critical piece of getting people to a place of stability are these services. And so I'm just happy to hear that we're moving along and progressing and providing services that we haven't done before.
Yes, thank you.
Very cool. Thank you. Appreciate your time and attention to these matters and being here today, both of you. Thank you very much. Do we have submitted public comments? Kathy?
We have no submitted public comments for any consent agenda items.
And do we have live comment waiting?
No, we do not.
Okay. I'm gonna ask my colleagues then if they would like any items removed from consent before we offer discussion, before we consider a motion.
Madam Chair, I would like to remove item number 27 from consent this morning. And if there are no others that would like to make, remove anything, I will move adoption of the consent agenda as revised.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm gonna recuse myself on item number 50 because of a potential source of income to my spouse. So Madam Clerk, please record my abstention on item 50, even though I will vote on the motion to approve the consent calendar. My vote will only be for the remaining items. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. I don't believe we have a second. Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second. We did pull Supervisor Maggert's 27, Supervisor. Thank you. And then, of course, we have an abstention on 50 from Supervisor Scrivner. With that in place, please cast your votes.
Thank you. The motion is approved. Four eyes, one absent. Supervisor Gleason.
Okay, moving right along, past consent, we get to item number seven, which is public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the Board on matters that are not on today's agenda but are within the legal jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors. Kathy, what do you have as by way of public presentation, or public comment?
We do have one voice message. We also have one email, and they're both regarding the same subject matter. So we are going to hear from Courtney Enns via voicemail, supporting the passage of SB 731. And you also received and have a hard copy of the email on the same subject matter submitted by Sarah Cooper. So we'll hear the voice message first.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Courtney Enns, C-O-R-T-N-I-E, last name E-N-N-S. I'm calling to request that we pass a Senate bill called SB 731 to prevent known problematic officers from continuing to terrorize communities by revoking the badges of police officers who are fired for excessive force, sexual misconduct, or dishonesty, and allow for independent investigations into their misconduct. There's an urgency ordinance that ensures everyone can have shelter during the pandemic. Inclusion of utility assistance allocates cares.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, we also have, currently have one person wanting to address your Board under public presentation via teleconference. This is Reedy Patel. Ms. Patel, if you would unmute your phone by pressing star six, you have two minutes to address the Board.
Hi, for my part, I directly spoke to you. I speak to you again today and ask you why you think you deserve the right to go home and lay your head at night, but other struggling families do not? Because that's the only reason, after hearing multiple statements from the public requesting that you enacted three acts we listed to protect our community members, you would continue not to approve them. While tens of millions across the nation are unemployed because of a pandemic they couldn't control, you're more than willing to let the people you represent suffer? All of you, your entire job is supposed to be protecting people. I want you all to tell me, if you enacted all three of our acts, who would they hurt? Because as far as I can see, they don't hurt anyone, but you're more than willing to be beholden to the real estate industry and others rather than protecting actual people. To stress again, we are in a pivotal moment, with another black man shot and killed just last night in L.A. White supremacy, imperialism, and colonialism that have built this nation while systematically oppressing others is now at the forefront of what our generation fights to dismantle. Most elections here in Kern County are won and lost based on no more than a few thousand votes. 70% of Kern County is below the age of 45, and a reckoning is upon all of you. We will no longer allow politicians like all of you to sleep soundly while others live in a nightmare. We don't care what party you're in. If you're supporting any inherently racist and oppressive policy, you are now the enemy. I am nonviolent, and our movement is nonviolent, but when you oppress and hurt people for so long, what do you want from the people? Stokely Carmichael even noted that Dr. King's policy was that nonviolence would achieve the gains for black people in the United States. His major assumption was that if you are nonviolent, if you suffer, your opponent will see your suffering and will be moved to change his heart. That's very good. He only made one fallacious assumption. In order for nonviolence to work, your opponent must have a conscience. The United States has none. It seems none of you do either. Again, I now ask every single one of you, are you willing to fight for a person you don't know as much as you're willing to fight for yourself? I'll release our act at item 34, and until then, think about the person you are and who you fight for.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have no additional speakers requesting to speak under public presentations.
Okay, so as that completes the public presentations, I'm going to move to item number eight, which is Board Member Announcements, and ask Mr. Constantine to please come forward. He's our Public Health Director, and to give us an update. Thank you for everything, Matt.
Good morning, Madam Chair. This morning, we are announcing 135 new cases within Kern County and unfortunately, six additional deaths today. Recently, the state, the governor, has made some significant changes to how we monitor counties' individual success in our attempts to fight COVID-19. These changes were implemented last week. They had become effective, they became effective on Monday, and previously, they had a statewide county data monitoring system that has now been replaced by a four-tier and four-color new system that ranks counties in their efforts to achieve success in bringing down the numbers of COVID-19. There's four colors. About 80% of the population is in the worst color, the color they call a purple color or Tier 1. So that's where Kern County stands now. But now, what the change is, they have linked the ability to open up businesses to how we are doing locally. So there's a tie now, and it provides encouragement for us to continue to do better. We are now being measured over two different metrics, the percent positivity in testing and our case rate. Before, we had about five different metrics. They've narrowed it down to two that we're being rated against. It's important to note, there's been some changes in that. The case rate now is the average number of new daily cases per 100,000. So although we're still, we're being measured at the same level, they've now taken a 14-day period and put it down to one period. So that the state is asking us to get out of this purple Tier 1 area. We need to do better than seven per 100,000 cases and a testing positivity rate that's below 8%. And those are averaged over seven days with a seven-day lag. This gets into the math a little bit. Currently, Kern County, as it stands today from the state, our testing positivity rate is 14.4%, which is actually lower than it's been in the past, and our case rate is 15. It again, needs to be seven. Until we're able to achieve both of those metrics and hold those achievements for two weeks, we will remain in our current tier. What the governor did allow to happen, though, beginning Monday, was for hair salons and barber shops to open up and resume activities indoor. That is allowed under this purple Tier 1 status. All of these criteria and what businesses are linked to what tiers are now on. All of these criteria and what businesses are linked to what tiers are now on the state's website, the covid19.ca.gov website. It's a very user-friendly website where you can put in Kern County and see where we fall and what can be open and not open. So we now have our work ahead of us. Our numbers have been trending down, which is good. We have some more work until we get to the next tier and, so that we can allow additional businesses to open. But this does set the stage for us on what we need to achieve to allow businesses to Madam Chair, that concludes my prepared comments. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, so Matt, how does our test, how does our testing rate get affected by how many facilities we have open or not open? I mean, are we, do we have what we think we need right now? I mean, what's the big picture on testing?
So in Kern County, our testing capabilities are far greater than most counties. We have, with your help, in particular Supervisor Press, we have 11 testing sites that are open, not including the mobile site that Supervisor Couch has and the federal surge site that Congressman McCarthy allocated. We have a lot of testing capability, and they're underutilized. Right now, on average, we're testing somewhere between, somewhere less than 500. It varies a little bit day to day, but we have tremendous capability, and we can do more testing. It does seem to ebb and flow quite a bit. At the beginning of July, we had a lot of people interested in testing, and that has now come down quite a bit since the beginning of July. So we have more capacity. In fact, the more people we test, in general, the positivity rate goes down, and if we are testing greater than what the state average is, they actually give us an offset on the case rate, meaning it's to our advantage, and it allows businesses, in theory, to open up sooner if we have more testing than is occurring.
What about our death rate, Matt? How do you feel about our death rate?
So as we've been reporting, there have been some increased deaths, as you've noticed. You know, the, obviously, that is really the unfortunate and dramatic effect that COVID-19 has in our community when we look at those that have passed away that can be attributed to COVID-19. The state does not track as a metric the number that have died in the county as it relates to businesses opening and these new tiered approach. So it is something that we report out. We think it's important to recognize those that have passed away. And as you know, we've been working hard with county council to try to get more information about those that have passed away out publicly. The statistician that county council has identified is working through that now in hopes that at some point, we can give more information out. And we want to continue that because I think that's an important metric to provide.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, Matt. So you don't believe that we need to be doing more testing right now? We have plenty of capacity, and we're underutilizing that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good. And regarding the death rate, we are not losing people because we have limited capacity in hospitals?
No, ma'am. In fact, our hospital situation today is probably better than it's been in months. We have, just to give you some, some figures, we have 864 available beds today, available. We have 43 staffable ICU beds available today. Overall, we have 111 Kern County residents that are hospitalized for COVID and 34 that are in the ICU. That seems like a lot, and it is, but it is a lot lower today than it's been in many weeks. So we've certainly seen a downward trend, which is good news. We're hopeful it continues, but we have to be careful. We don't want to let off any effort at all about this. I was meeting with a business owner yesterday morning, and they indicated that in their market, they see less people wearing masks when our numbers are reported as lower. And that is not what we want. We don't want to keep our foot off the gas at all. We need to keep the efforts up. If we're making progress, we need to do more of the same, not less. So we're trying to really reemphasize. And businesses' ability to reopen are directly linked to our efforts.
Very good. Matt, thank you so much. I really appreciate your participation, encouragement, and support to the Latino Task Force.
Yes, ma'am.
We know that this is a community that is disproportionately impacted for a whole host of reasons, and I'm grateful to see the county partner so closely with the Latino Task Force and leaders of this community, myself included, to really drive home a new campaign on, you know, personal responsibility and community efforts to get back open and get back to normal as fast as we can. But really, thank you for that, Matt. I really appreciate it. Everybody feels really great about your participation and your support. So thank you. Supervisor Maggard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Would you like me to pivot into a couple of things about our task force at the moment?
That would be great. I was going to call on you for ad hoc, and then, of course, we have the plasma drive. So I'd say, take it away. I'll follow up after you, Supervisor.
Okay, so I'll let you do the plasma drive thing when we get to that, then. Mr. Constantine, thank you for your information you shared with us this morning. Can you give me the numbers one more time about what our current hospital count is?
Yes, sir. So as of, as of August 30th, we're always a day behind or two. We have 864 available hospital beds, and we have 43 available ICU staffable beds today. We have 111 Kern County residents that are hospitalized for COVID and 34 that are in the ICU.
Thirty-four in ICU, I think. That's the number I couldn't, didn't catch. Tell me a little bit, please, about this offset for the case rate if we are testing more than, that part escapes me. Is it more than others? Is it more than an average, a standard? Where are we in that regard? And is, are we close to having a case rate adjustment made for Kern County?
Supervisor Maggard through the chair. The state has not given us specific information yet about the offset. We have a call tonight at 5:30 where we're hoping to learn more. They were in a rush to get out the main framework of this new program last week. What we can tell, looking at the numbers that they've issued to other counties, depending on the factor, you're above the state average testing rate, they offer an offset, a reduction in the case rate you have to achieve. Somewhere between 20 and 60% is what we can reverse engineer from the table they sent out late last night. Our hope is, tonight, they explain that and provide written details so that we know the number that we have to hit.
So do you believe we are testing at a rate greater than other counties in California?
In the Central Valley, our capacity is far greater in Kern than elsewhere. The problem is, we are not today testing above the state average. So we, the offset, as we believe, we understand, it would not apply to us today.
It's frustrating to me, this, where we find ourselves frustrating to me in several ways. One is that the more we test, that we poured great resources into elevating our testing capacity, the more we test, the more case, cases we discover. And as we discover more cases, and that's applied to our population, that helps us fail the case rate count. That's, is that correct in your understanding?
Supervisor Maggard through the chair. There, it's unknown. At times, additional testing did seem to address the positivity rate, did drive it up. I think the understanding in general, though, is additional testing, community-wide testing that's asymptomatic, that there's no cost, so in other words, there's no barriers, may in fact, drive that positivity rate down. We don't yet have good math to indicate either way.
Well, positivity would be affected if, well, people are getting tested.
Yes.
But the case rate will inevitably go up if more people are tested because there is, the disease is present in our community to a much greater extent than those just going to get tested, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's.
Sorry, my misunderstanding.
Yeah, that's fine. It's difficult for many people to understand me, so that's a problem. That's frustrating to me. It's also frustrating to me, I just want to pontificate for a second, I guess, about this. It's frustrating to me that we spent, we have spent millions and millions of dollars trying to make sure we had adequate hospital capacity, and now the governor decides he's not going to measure us based on hospital capacity. We've spent millions of dollars, and he told us that the ability to reopen our economy would be based upon our ability to manage our hospital capacity. We have done that very effectively, and now he doesn't count hospital capacity. So that's, that's frustrating to me. It's also frustrating to me that he has arbitrarily, he's arbitrarily deciding which jobs are sustained and which jobs are ended, and very likely, which jobs are ended permanently. How can there be a difference in the effect on the public if you go into a hair salon versus a nail salon? But when the hair salon is allowed to be open, the nail salon is not allowed to be open. How could it be that kids are safe in Walmart, apparently, but they are not safe in church? And your life won't change a whit if you don't go to Walmart today, but your life may change dramatically if you don't go to church this weekend and receive some reminder of why you have a reason to hope. At my own church, at one, just one of our services, the pastor asked, how many of you have contemplated suicide in the last few weeks? And 12 to 15 people stood in the midst of the congregation and said they contemplated suicide. How many more people didn't stand up? I mean, it is, this is a serious problem, and I'm just very frustrated by, by the, what I think is the arbitrary nature of this. So do you have any sense of, are those frustrations shared in other places? Maybe you aren't in meetings that would reveal that. And do you get any sense of, of these changes being, changes being made that would make it less arbitrary like this?
Supervisor Maggard, yes, we are on multiple calls with other counties, and based on their questions, we can certainly understand that they too share your concerns about the arbitrary nature, because it's the local public health officials that need to be able to define and explain, and sometimes, these arbitrary rules to different organizations. And everybody doesn't fit in a box, right? And so it's difficult for us to explain that. So many of our meetings with the state are trying to seek clarification by, what do you mean? And how do you, how do you reason that out? Because we're the ones that actually have to do it locally. We have to explain it to people so that they understand it. So yes, there's frustration. I do not see any indication of any, any change coming. That's not generally the nature of these phone, phone calls, but they, there is frustration. Yes, sir. And I do want to make a comment. We did make some significant changes in how we managed ICU beds. You were a leader in that. Part of the reason was to help address the state's metrics. The other reason, which, of course, you led, was so that our residents have access to that healthcare if they need it. The whole purpose of flattening that curve, and you recognized as long, as we did, that ICU beds was the limiting factor, and it still is on the graph, a real concern for us. So that, that ability to push ICU nurses that the county pays for into the hospital adds a tremendous amount of, of a safety net that I, I still think is going to be needed, and I'm grateful that we have that positioned and we're ready if we need it. So that, that forethought was, remains very pertinent.
Well, I want to just always remind folks that this entire board shares those concerns. It isn't just, certainly isn't just me. Our entire board shares those concerns and their commitment to applying the resources to make sure we manage them properly. What is, I guess what is so frustrating to me is, we have little effect on the growth of the disease. We're trying, but the, the ultimate cure, or at least some, some vaccine that will help protect us from the ravages of the disease are, that's beyond our, our control. But, you know, the other responsibility we have is how to maintain and preserve the quality of life for the people that we represent. And that means, how do they keep their house? How do they keep their apartment? How do they keep their kid in school? How do they, how do they pay for college? All the consequences of that, it's just frustrating, and I, I'm not doing that just to hear myself talk about it. I want the governor to hear the frustration that exists amongst people throughout California. And I, I wonder how long they will tolerate the arbitrary nature of it. So thank you, Mr. Constantine, for that. Mr. Zervis, could you give us a brief update on the, where we are with our loan program, not only to businesses but also to nonprofits? The opportunity to start to apply for forgiveness is now underway. Can you give us any idea of how that's going? And can, then, can you give us some sense of what we're doing about our nonprofits that we set up?
Yes, Supervisor Maggard through the chair. Thank you for the opportunity. The forgiveness process for the Kern Recovers Forgivable Loan Program is, is moving forward. We are processing applications, and we've sent out reminder letters to all the recipients of those funds to remind them of the need to file for, for forgiveness. In fact, on the consent agenda today is, is a, an item that helps us to expedite the forgiveness process for those loans under $25,000. And so with, with approval of that item, we will be reaching out again to all of those businesses to help move this process along. But it, but it is proceeding.
Could, could we pause there for just a second?
Absolutely.
There is a strategy being considered by many with regard to the PPP program, Payroll Protection Program, that, the federal program. There's a strategy that's being contemplated about delaying asking for forgiveness, because, for one thing, it allows for a longer period of time to utilize the funds for forgivable purposes, 24 weeks as opposed to eight weeks. I believe our program was 24 weeks from the get-go, right?
Ours was 18 weeks.
18 weeks.
From the get-go. So yeah, that wouldn't help to delay.
But, but the, to delay, well, there's another reason why they're also contemplating delaying, and that is that at the federal level, there is some discussion, apparently, that they may not require a forgiveness application for loans below a certain threshold. And it will be interesting to see if that happens there and what implications that might have. Do you have any, any comment about that before you go on to your next point?
I do. We've been, we've been monitoring that situation pretty closely, and, and at first, kind of waiting to see what the federal government was going to do in that regard in issuing kind of blanket forgiveness under a certain threshold. Ultimately, after discussion with, with our lending partners and, and county staff, we determined it, it did seem appropriate to move forward with a similar, similar type modification in the forgiveness process, and that's, that's a dual-tier forgiveness process where any, any loans under $25,000, there is still an application, but it's not required that all documentation is submitted. They simply have to retain that documentation and produce it if we need it down the road. It's a one, it's a, I think, a two-page, very simple forgiveness application form. So that first tier under 25,000 was really modeled around the same principles that, that gave rise to, to that proposed legislation in the federal government.
So is there, is that communication occurring between the lender and the borrower? You know, it's not in zero republic. It doesn't need to be because it only affects those people affected by the loan. But is there's an aggressive way to get that communicated to the borrower?
That's correct, and we've actually done a direct mailing once to all recipients, and we'll reach out. With the modifications to the forgiveness process, we'll be taking the opportunity to reach out to them all again. So they'll hear from the county and from their lenders on that.
Very good, thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt you about your pivot to the nonprofit side of the house.
No, no, no problem at all. With respect to the Kern Recovers Nonprofit Grant Program, this was approved by your board on August 18th. I'm pleased to report to your board that the application process and the website went live yesterday, yesterday afternoon, in fact. So this is the program that provides grants to nonprofits in the amounts of 5,000, 10,000, or $20,000. That website is live. It's under the Kern County website. You can find it under Kern Recovers, under the grant program, nonprofit grant program. So we would encourage nonprofits to take a look at the criteria, and if it fits their, fits their mission and, and what they're doing, to, to go ahead and submit an application. The application process is all online. There are various documents we require being submitted, but it's a, it's a totally online process, and we are prepared to start reviewing those as soon as they come in. That application period will be open for the month of September, in which time we'll be reviewing and, and gathering that data, looking forward to making awards of those grants in October.
Very good. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
There are some other issues that our committee has dealt with, particularly with regard to SNFs, but we're going to have a separate item specifically to that. So I'll, I'll pause on making any other comment about that at this point. Supervisor Scrivener, I'm happy to defer to you on anything you might want to say.
Thank you, Supervisor Maggard. Just, just a couple of things. One thing on the, on the ICU bed issue, I mean, obviously, the most important reason why we want to have ICU bed capacity is so our residents can receive the, the care that they deserve. But I certainly share Supervisor Maggard's But I certainly share Supervisor Maggard's frustration that that originally was an important metric for us to hit in order to have a positive outcome for our businesses where they could remain open. And now unfortunately, we don't receive any credit for that, but we certainly can be punished if we're able to move into the next tier. The state can exercise an emergency brake and close those businesses down if we don't reach that ICU bed capacity. So the efforts that we've, that we've employed throughout our community between the hospitals and the efforts of this board are certainly going to be important, especially if we're able to move in to that next red tier. I did want to ask a question of, of public health in regard to testing. My frustration through this process is, has been tied a lot to the turnaround time for the tests. We were seeing out at Ridgecrest Hospital at one point, 19-day turnaround time from the time a test was rendered to when we would see results. And we were seeing 14 days pretty regularly. So how are we doing in our, in our efforts to identify more, more vendors that can help us to turn those tests around so our contact tracing is more effective?
Supervisor Scrivner through the chair. The turnaround time has significantly improved. We have daily reports of every testing site and we have, we ask, "What is their turnaround time?" And it has gone from weeks now back to days. Some are showing turnaround times of 48 hours, but we see the most within three to five days. So it's back to where it was at the beginning. Of course, any delay affects our ability to do contact tracing, just as you said. We had two locations that we had identified that potentially could do it quicker in Los Angeles. We put those on hold a little bit until we would, we wanted to see how this would stabilize and it has stabilized for the time being. So currently it's, it's better and we think we're okay.
That's great news. Thank you so much. Thank you, Supervisor. Madam Chair?
Thank you, Zach. Appreciate your follow-up and, and that is such a massive improvement, really a major hats off to Congressman McCarthy for bringing in and infusing Kern County's operation with a rapid turnaround. That's a major game changer. So Zach, thank you. I know you've had a part of that, so hats off to you. Supervisor Couch, you had a question of Supervisor Maggard while he was speaking.
Yeah.
You want to address that now?
Thank you. I have a question for Matt. I wanted to pick up on something that Supervisor Maggard said. I'm frustrated as well with, for example, the hospital capacity no longer being a metric that, but then Supervisor Scrivner suggests that yes, but it would be helpful if we get into the red category. But I have a question about when, when people come in to test, are you given information about whether they are symptomatic or not? Or are you just told they've taken, they've been doing tests? Excuse me.
Supervisor Couch through the chair. At a community testing site, they do not have to be symptomatic. So we don't have any information if they've declared or not, if they, if they have any sort of symptoms.
Because part of this is, my question revolves around getting down to the number that we need to get down to. And the more healthy people that test, the faster we get there. But didn't we just have the CDC just recently say, "You don't need to go get a test and you shouldn't get a test unless you're exhibiting symptoms"?
Yes, sir. So the CDC came out with some recommendations. The state has not implemented those recommendations, so we're status quo. California Department of Public Health's position-
They may not have, and I'm not talking over you and I don't disagree with you. They haven't implemented, implemented it, but everybody heard that.
Yes, sir.
"Don't go get a test unless you're, you have symptoms."
Yes, sir.
Which, if that follows here in Kern County, we're going to stay with a high rate. It's going to be harder and harder for us to get into those different tiers.
Yes, sir.
That's another frustration. I, how do we pass on our frustrations to the governor? What's our, what's our conduit? Is it CSAC?
Yes. I think they speak a similar voice. Your, your frustrations that we hear are similar to what we hear elsewhere. I think that, that is probably a good place to go because you speak loudly when it's all together. We are told what is being deployed here locally. We're not asked. So we don't have that voice locally through public health.
I believe you and it's not for a lack of trying. It's unfortunate. Thank you. I have one other comment I wanted to make to staff. We, we, was it just last week we, we had the item about rental assistance? Are you going to come back and report on that one of these days like you do with the other?
Today.
You're doing that today? Good. Are you, here's where I'm really going with this question. Are you able to report today about what the incorporated cities in Kern County have done in that report?
No, that will not be in my report today. Our report today will be specifically on the state, state action. But we will be back before your board on a regular basis reporting on the status of our, of our program.
I'm interested in that information being included in, in those reports.
Will do.
If you, if you can get it.
Absolutely.
Supervisor Couch, are you done for now? Okay. We're done with that. Mr. Constantine, we may have you up one more time, but I, I wanted to announce to the public the plasma drive that we have scheduled for tomorrow at the fairgrounds between 8:30 and 3:00 PM. If you recall several weeks ago, when Supervisor Maggard pressed Mr. Constantine about our issue, our, our status with plasma, and it appeared based on Houchen's representations that we were significantly in the red. We were in a deficit, a daily deficit. We needed, they needed 20 orders that day and had no one lined up to come in. So since the really layout of this campaign started right here on this Board of Supervisors by my colleague, Mike Maggard, there are now daily people coming into Houchen. I understand about 20 people a day coming into Houchen, providing their, their convalescent plasma for our neighbors in this community. And I think that is a profound success. I think it is a remarkable display by this board of our commitment to take action and to work locally to improve the lives of our neighbors. That has been demonstrated by Supervisor Couch's first in the country mobile testing for farm workers, by Zach's utilization of his relationships to turn around our test time in a record fashion unprecedented. And of course Supervisor Maggard leading the charge on this plasma opportunity. And so I am grateful today and I want to thank my colleagues in this county for putting politics aside and for taking action that matters to our neighbors right here in Kern County. I feel very good about that. I want to thank you, Mike, because you have been a star in pursuing this issue and bringing it to fruition. Tomorrow, 8:30 to 3:00 at the fairgrounds, we are collecting plasma. And of course, we, I believe we have the flyer. Kathy?
Hold up.
The, the, oh no, which, which flyer do we have? The Thursday one? Okay, got it. My mistake. So we have had a flyer out circulating as well as videos on social media. If of course a person is able to donate, they will receive a 2021 fare package, which includes four tickets, two, two parking passes. That's a $70 value and of course a $50 gift certificate from Houchen. So certainly we're looking to compensate and thank folks in real time. But if you are able to give, please call, make an appointment, 565-6040, 565-6040, or you can call my office and speak with my staff. But Supervisor Maggard, do you have any input you'd like to add? Again, thank you for leading the charge. It has obviously caused a shift in culture here and it really demonstrates how powerful our voices are here and how remarkable it is when we work together for the good of this county. So Supervisor Maggard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank our entire board and our staff for jumping on the bandwagon about convalescent plasma. It is making a difference in helping save lives and help people get through the, the recovery process much faster. You Supervisor Perez, Madam Chair, certainly did the heavy lifting on this event at the fairgrounds, you and Houchen Blood Bank. And you're to be commended for doing that. So thank you for that. I'm just, just lend my name and get to go smile and clap and tell people, "Good job." But you did all the hard work on that. So thank you very much for that. I wanted to also just point out to people that Houchen is offering $50, I think tomorrow when this goes on, they're offering $50 per donation, I believe it is, plus there's a $250 weekly drawing they have for all those who have given and a $1,000 monthly drawing for all those that give. So this is, they're, they're very much neck deep in trying to help us get there as well. So I think it's good to offer people an opportunity to do whatever they can do to help fight back against the disease. And that's the, one of the, the real benefits, I think, of the convalescent plasma program. Just to pivot on that for just a second, there, there will be opportunities in our community for the public to do more. One of those is, and, and right now it's focused on those who are ill and have, are either just diagnosed or ill and recovering, convalescent plasma is for those that are recovering. But if, if someone has just become diagnosed with COVID, there is going to, there will be opportunities for them to participate in some trials that are going through our community. So Mr. Constantine, is it premature to talk about that? Should we, should we come back and talk about that later? But I, the responding very, very quickly when these opportunities are there is important.
Yes, sir. Supervisor Maggard, as you helped us kind of connect individuals, there is a clinicals trial that is underway and there's some applicability for Kern County residents to participate. We're still working through some of the details and some of the requirements, some of the stringent requirements of the study, but we're optimistic that we, we can be able to promote it and ask those that are willing to participate to connect to the research university so that we can evaluate potential preventative measures. Yes, sir.
There are all kinds of different theories that are going on around the country. There's a medicine called colchicine, which people who have gout take. And it is this medicine that you take that helps reduce the inflammation in your body that gout brings on. Well, there's this theory that colchicine may help people fight off the disease because there's this swelling that occurs and it causes just an avalanche of, as I understand it, of, I'm probably not getting this exactly right, but blood clots that kill people. And so the idea is, can, can they figure out if colchicine will help people not succumb to this swelling and there's blood clots that, that become terminal? So there will be opportunities. The reason for people to participate in that, the reason I bring it up now is that I'd like to see if the board is comfortable with changing potentially the language. And I don't want us to wait two weeks until we meet again to do this if it becomes necessary. This particular trial requires people to make contact within 24 hours of when they are diagnosed. So it's a very rapid turnaround. And, and I'm not asking county staff to be the ones who make these phone calls. But remember how we changed the wording when there's a, you sign off a disclaimer when you sign up to take one of the tests that allows going prospectively now for Houchen to contact you about giving convalescent plasma? If we have a similar disclaimer that allows you to be contacted, if you, and it's, it's all up to the discretion of the patient, but whether or not the patient might want to participate in this trial, it doesn't hurt you at all. It doesn't do anything negative for you, to you. But a disclaimer like that would help them move forward much, much more, more quickly. So if, if the board is okay with that, I would like to ask staff to, to work with Mr. Constantine and be nimble enough to change that going forward if this thing takes off on how we might be able to get more people to participate.
Fantastic.
What are your thoughts, colleagues?
They, I see both Supervisors Couch and Scrivner nodding in the affirmative. So thank you. It's amazing how much we don't know, right, Matt? How much we're learning on a weekly, sometimes daily basis. But I was really stunned at the impact that plasma had on treating my first cousin, who is separately treating cancer through chemotherapy and indicated that COVID was an overall much worse experience than treatment for cancer and has maintained that position. And it is so striking to me that that could be possible. But every single person's body is so different. And the fact that she was in the hospital for three days without seeing a doctor, on the third day received plasma and almost immediately began to feel better. She couldn't even really describe it. As I was tracking her hour by hour in her hospital stay, she just began to feel better. That lifted her spirits. That lifted her state of mind and within a day and a half, she was home recovering. That is compelling to me. I am not a scientist. I'm not a doctor, obviously not an expert in any of these areas. But that experience, along with this one potentially, Mike and many others are, have the capacity to reduce the impact on our healthcare system, the profound costs associated with what are finite resources always. These aspects can help reduce the trauma, number one, not just to our patients, but to the healthcare system that we know has its limitations naturally. So I really feel good about this. I really urge the community, please, please call our office, call Houchen. We have worked with them numerous times. Mike Olcott, the CEO of the County Fair, has been such a star. He always contributes to our donations here by giving a little something back to people who are giving to our neighbors. So I want to thank Mike Olcott. He'll be there tomorrow, Mike, with us-
I will.
-as we launch off and, and continue to remind the public that this is something that we can lock arms in, something we can agree on and work with each other together on to improve Kern County's, Kern County's overall status on these matters and of course get us to normal ASAP. So thank you. That's a great partnership. That's meaningful to my colleagues. My heart is full and grateful for your hard work. So moving on, I do want to announce, and I believe we have a flyer for this. Thank you, Matt, for everything. There's a fundraiser lunch this Thursday to benefit Secret Witness of Kern County. The lunch includes a tri-trip sandwich, chips, cookie, and a bottle of water for $10. The fundraiser will be held at the 1200 block of Truxton between the Justice Building, which is the municipal court, and the County Administrative Building. So right out here. Any other, any comments on that issue? Okay, so I'm going to ask board member announcements. Is there anything else before we move to item number 27? Okay. So we're going to move to item 27, which was pulled from consent by Supervisor Maggard. And I'm going to hand the floor to you, Supervisor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I pulled item 27 because I have a couple of concerns with regard to that item. Item 27 is a request of this board to designate trained personnel to initiate Welfare and Institutions Code Section 5150 applications for the evaluation and involuntary detention of mentally disordered individuals. That's a synopsis of the first paragraph of the referral. And then it specifies how we go about making sure that the 5150 program can be, can be put forward. I, I'm okay with the 5150 program going forward today. I don't see a reason for us not to approve this item. But I have concerns about two areas with regard to the involuntary detention of mentally disordered individuals. My, my primary concern is we, our streets have hundreds and hundreds of mentally disordered or mentally ill people wandering about the streets. It is becoming worse. The public's patience and tolerance for it is, is waning. That is a dangerous recipe for conflict. And I don't want that to affect those who are ill and I don't want to affect, to affect those who are the victims of the acting out by those that are on our streets and are mentally ill. So I would like us to specifically look at the issue of how we can more aggressively and more effectively, because frankly, I don't think we have done this effectively, how we can more effectively change the lives of the mentally ill people on our streets and the quality of life for everyone around them who has to deal with them. So I would like to make that referral back to staff and ask CAO Alsop if he would join me in initiating a conversation with Mr. Walker to dramatically change the level of involvement we have in, in that area. Secondly, the issue about who can make 5150 referrals, that issue is, has come to my attention recently as being a bigger issue in our mental health treatment facilities and in our ERs than I understood it to be in the past. So as well, Mr. Alsop, would you mind joining me in, in having that conversation with Mr. Walker? And then let's bring Mr. Walker back to the entire board so we can all hear, so we can all hear the, the, what, what we get from that. So Madam Chair, that's my referral. I'm happy to motion that we approve item 27, but I wanted to make sure that as we do that, these referrals could be made to staff.
Very good. Thank you, Supervisor. I understand Bill Walker's on the line and available should we need him. I don't know that we need him now, but he is there. If my colleagues don't have a question, I do have, we do have a motion on 27 and of course a referral. Do we vote on those separate? Kathy?
The referral could be included in the motion.
Okay. Excellent.
If that's being made by Supervisor Maggard.
Very good. We have a motion.
I'll second it, but I want to allow Mr. Walker a chance to make a comment if he would like, if he's on the line. I didn't know that.
Okay. Mr. Walker, are you available to comment?
I am. Can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Maggard, as the Chair, thank you very much for bringing this forward. I look forward to working with you and with our CAO. I think at this point I'll keep the comments brief. The, the impact on the street and the hospitals of mentally ill and active substance users is fairly complex, and I look forward to bringing both information, the flow of opportunity beds available, and what we've done, and, and then joining you with processes that could improve the, the street outreach moving into the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your remarks, and I look forward to hearing more about this particular opportunity. So we have a motion and a second.
Madam Chair, we do not have any public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. No public comment. We have a motion and a second with Supervisor Couch. I'd ask if you please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. Four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Gleason.
Thank you very much. We're going to move to item number 34, which is an update on the status of the State of California's Moratorium on Evictions related to the COVID-19 pandemic. This is up for receive and file, and of course, an update. Mr. Alsop and Ms. Graham, I understand you are teed up. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. First, I just wanted as a courtesy to the spirited caller during public comment who raised and had some comments regarding AB 731. For those of you who aren't familiar with that bill, essentially, very high-level description. It was, it would, it would have established a process to decertify police officers in certain situations of misconduct. That I'm reporting to you today, that that bill died in the State Assembly last night. Last night was the legislative deadline for the state legislature to pass all of their bills and send them along to the governor. So AB 731, which was a bill in public comment by, I can't remember the, the woman's name, but that died in the assembly, did not advance, so any, any comments or suggestions or advocacy related to, to that bill should be directed to the, to the governor and the state legislature. Thank you, Madam Chair. This, this item we have because we had made a commitment to discuss it in previous discussions of your board, the last couple of public meetings your board had. We have not only discussed, but your board has taken action related to rental assistance and had some discussions around this issue of evictions and the moratorium on evictions that was to sunset on today. And we had mentioned that the state legislature was working really, really hard to pass a, pass some legislation that would deal with it. I'm reporting today that they did. That bill was an urgency bill that was sent to the governor. He signed it late last night before midnight. It has immediate effect all over the state of California. It does provide some additional extension of protections for evictions, and with that, I'm going to ask if our county council would like to walk your board through what that bill does specifically.
Yes, thank you. AB 3088, which was passed last night, is titled "The Tenant, Homeowner, and Small Landlord Relief and Stabilization Act of 2020," and it, and it enacts two separate acts, which is the COVID-19 Small Landlord and Homeowner Relief Act, known as the Homeowner Act, and the COVID-19 Tenant Relief Act of 2020, which is known as the Tenant Act. The acts will serve as a six-month bridge or stopgap to give the legislature and stakeholders time to craft a more robust legislative solution to eviction issues and concerns and, as well as foreclosure issues. The bill does not relieve tenants, homeowners, or landlords of their financial and contractual obligations, but rather prevents foreclosure and evictions during the pandemic period through February 1st of 2021, of 2021. Some of the key provisions addressed in the act are that for rent that is missed between March 1st, 2020, and August 31st, 2020, tenants cannot be evicted on the, based on the missed rent. They still owe, they will still owe the full amount, and landlords can bring a small claims court action to recover rent as of March 1st, so they won't be able to recover their rent until March 1st, 2020, 21. The rent missed from today, September 1st, 2020, through January 31st, 2021. If tenant, if the tenant pays at least 25% of their rent each month during that period of time, they cannot be evicted, and the remaining amount owed can be recovered by their landlord and small claims court, again, as of March 1st, 2021. If a renter is unable to pay the 25%, the landlord still can't proceed with the eviction until February 1st of 2021. Until February 1st, 2025, the acts provide that a, the small claims court has jurisdictions in any action for recovery of COVID-19 rental debt, regardless of the amount demanded. Currently, small claims cap is at 5,000, but they've, they've opened that up, so any rental debt, regardless of the amount, can be brought through small claims. They also have a requirement that it's only two claims per year. This act would require that they can bring as many claims as they need to, to recover their rental debt. Action may not be, and again, action cannot be commenced until March 1st, 2021. The acts also extend the time for renters to respond to the pay-or-quit notice that starts the eviction process from three business days to 15 business days, and will give the renters a chance to sign a declaration that says that they are unable, they are not able to pay rent due to COVID-related issues. And it also allows local ordinances related to COVID-19 renter protections to continue if they were in place prior to August 19th of 2020, though some of the provisions of those current ordinances may be preempted. And it, and it would permit new local ordinances to become operational on or after February 1st of 2021. So if you don't already have an ordinance, you cannot enforce an ordinance through any county or city until February 1st of 2021. It also increases penalties for landlords who engage in illegal lockouts to remove tenants outside of the eviction process. I think that's, it's a 68-page bill, so there's a lot of detail and a lot of information, but that's, in a nutshell, the basics of the bill. And I'm open to questions if you have any.
Yeah, can you comment on the landlord's side?
Yeah, on the landlord's side, it, it has also provided some protections for landlords. It's a little detailed there, but basically, there are a lot of protections that the government gives landlords, and typically, a lot of those protections only extended if the residential properties were occupied by the landlords, if they were, you know, owner-occupied residential facility, residential buildings or homes. It has extended that to tenant-occupied. So now, a lot of those protections that were only previously provided to owner-occupied now extends to renter-occupied. That's one of the ones that stood out the most to me. Other ones were, I think the main thing in this bill is that they are able to still collect rent, the rents are still due, and they do that through the small, they can do that through the small claims process, which is a much easier process to go through than having to file a civil action.
And the state probably can't do this, but what I'm interested in is knowing sort of both sides of the equation. If, if tenants, what it sounds like, are only required if they fill out the right paperwork to pay 25% of their rent, and if they don't pay all of it by sometime in 2021, the landlord can take them to small claims court, what does the landlord, what kind of relief does the landlord have if he has a mortgage on that property?
Yeah, it, it, I'm sorry. Mr. Alsop's in stating that it's converted to consumer debt. They still can go through the eviction process under certain conditions if they're not paying the full amount. If they're paying less than that 25%, they can still go through the eviction process, but not until a later time.
But they still have to pay their entire mortgage?
I, I believe that they, there may be some federal programs out there that, some of the legislation that they just passed talks about referrals to some consumer-type organizations that will give them some, hopefully give them some aid. And I don't think that that's been flushed out completely at this point, but I think that there are some resources for them.
So can you give us, not today, but can you give us sort of a side-by-side bullet points of, here's protections for tenants, for landlords, with regard to not only rent, but also mortgage payments?
Yeah, we can create something and bring it back to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, if I may, really quick, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things because I, I think it probably needs to be clarified given some of the, some of the questions regarding the legal framework that is established by this bill with regard to hardship and, and payments. I'm going to, I'm going to describe, there are two categories I'm going to walk you through. Under this bill, unpaid rent and other payment obligations under the lease accrued between March 1st, 2020, and yesterday, are converted to consumer debts and cannot form the basis for an eviction ever. So that's one part of it. On the 25% of rent payment, some, just some clarity, unpaid rent and other obligations under the lease accrued between today and the end of this calendar year, January, I'm sorry, the January 31st of, of next year, cannot form the basis for an eviction until after January 31st, 2021, period. In addition, if the tenant pays at least 25% of any amount that the landlord demands after it comes due, the remaining unpaid balance is converted to consumer debt and cannot form the basis for an eviction ever, period. So that is really the meat, I think, of this legislation in terms of evictions. There's a moratorium on it through the end of the calendar year, and this legislation doesn't allow anybody at the local level that has not already done so, or that does not have anything that is more strict, take any action until this, the provisions of this bill sunset. I believe that's what Ms. Graham described earlier, so.
Supervisor Scrivner?
Just specifically to Supervisor Couch's question on what, what recourse the landlords have or what programs are available for them in regard to their mortgages. I believe that the state legislature just punted to the feds on that because it's, those are federal programs, loan programs, and so it's essentially silent on that, is it not?
It's more silent than we'd like it to be. Yes, sir.
I was going to say, yes, there is some language in there that it does seem to be punning it to the feds, but again, I think this is just meant to be something to get us through to January, and they're hoping that more legislation will come about that will offer more protection at that time.
Anything else, Zach? Okay. Gentlemen, anything else? Do we have public comment on this matter?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair, members of the board. Your board received nine emailed comments, which you have copies of in front of you. You received them electronically yesterday, urging the board to adopt an urgency ordinance for eviction moratorium, include utility assistance with rental and mortgage assistance, and establish a fully funded right-to-legal counsel policy and program. That's the summary of those emailed comments that you received. We also have speakers who would like to address the board telephonically, and we will start with our first speaker, Reedy Patel. Ms. Patel, if you would unmute your phone by pressing star six, you have two minutes to address the board.
We heard a woman talk about, we heard Mr. Maggard even talk about, for instance, A have contemplated, one in four 18-year-olds have contemplated suicide in the past month. We heard a woman about, we heard a man, they all, you know what exacerbates every single one of these people? You get this, it's literally source to multiple people and it can even send you to life. Also Supervisor Mag, you severely need to stress about community suffer, suffering from mental illness. You speak about our community, some people should be hidden and shunned from suicide. Please get it together. Once again, our three asks are an urgency ordinance to ensure that everyone can have shelter during the COVID pandemic, basically stopping evictions. Or two, the inclusion of utility assistance with the existing rental and mortgage assistance. Three, allocation care funding towards addressing the increasing need for legal representation and guidance for tenants facing evictions, including services for undocumented individuals. Mr. Couch, you talk about worrying about mortgage protections along with tenant protection. We have great news for you. Guess what these three asks do? They protect everyone because that's what we're supposed to do. I do not understand how all of you are not getting this. I want you all to answer me right here and right now why you wouldn't approve these three asks, please.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Alyssa Bernardino. Ms. Bernardino, if you would unmute your phone by pressing star six, you have two minutes to address the board.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Bernardino, and I'm a resident and voter in Zach Scrivner's district. I'm reaching out today to reiterate what we already know. We're living through a housing and public health crisis that requires bold courageous action from our political leaders, and AB 3088 is a pathetic excuse for bold courageous action. I have a genuine question. How are we expecting everyday people of Kern County, people with families to feed and bills to pay, to afford their housing once this is over, after they've been out of a job for months, were unable to save prior to the pandemic, and may now be dealing with medical costs associated with the novel coronavirus? People say all the time, a society is measured by how it treats its most vulnerable. We're presented with a real opportunity to prove that Kern County can be a leader during this crisis by supporting residents, our unhoused community, our most vulnerable communities during this unprecedented time in history, where the only way we get through is together. It's through the allocation of resources that we show what we value. Do we value human life, or do we just say that we do? It's a moral failing that in the richest country in the world, when large corporations have taken taxpayer-funded bailouts to the tune of billions of dollars, that we are even having this discussion. But we're here, so I'm calling on all of you to adopt the following three asks that you have heard before, but which I hope you internalize. An urgency ordinance that ensures everyone is housed during the pandemic. The inclusion of utility assistance with rent and mortgage assistance, and the allocation of care's funding to address the needs of legal representation for tenants facing evictions, including services for our undocumented community. We're angry, we're voters, and we're all paying attention. Please think this through and remember that this isn't a game we're playing. People's lives are at stake. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jasmine Delagila. Jasmine, if you would unmute your phone by pressing star six, you have two minutes to address the board.
Excuse me. Good morning, Madam Chair and Board Supervisors. My name is Jasmine Delagila with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. Today is the last day that thousands of Kern residents at risk of eviction will sleep well at night, knowing that they will not be evicted. State legislation negotiated to address evictions in the state of California has overlooked the vulnerability of many renters and does not completely ensure that everyone in Kern can stay housed in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic. It is of the utmost importance to keep individuals and families housed so that everyone is given the opportunity to follow public health recommendations, guidelines, and the governor's ongoing stay-at-home orders. For many, however, the ability to do this successfully becomes more and more challenging as we continue to ignore the fact that in order, in order to slow and In response to the prevailing need for local leadership, we ask your board to take action and ensure that no one is displaced from their homes as we continue to fight this global pandemic and the economic hardships that COVID-19 has brought onto everyone, especially the most vulnerable in our community. To prevent the displacement of individuals and families that can start as early as September 2nd, we respectfully request that the county immediately adopt an ordinance prohibiting evictions from causes not covered under the newly enacted AB 3088. In additionally, eligible tenants will have to navigate a complex process to assert protections afforded by AB 3088. We know tenants will need to access resources centers and legal representation to provide advice and counsel. We therefore respectfully request the county to adopt a fully funded a right-to-counsel program to ensure tenants are truly protected. The county can and should build on the success of the Schreiber Project, currently managed by GBLA, and ensure that a program reaches all vulnerable tenants. State legislation has fallen short to what is needed to protect public health and reduce the number of COVID-19 positive cases in the state of California. We welcome the opportunity to work with the county staff to draft an urgency moratorium and a right-to-counsel policy. If there was ever a time for bold and decisive leadership, now is the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Kaylee Cho. Ms. Cho, if you would unmute your phone by pressing star six, you have two minutes to address the board.
Good morning. My name is Kaylee Cho. I spoke a couple of weeks ago calling for protections against evictions during COVID because AB 1436 was in jeopardy. I was disappointed that our state was deciding to remove their protection, but even more disheartened by your board's lack of action. During that meeting, many other people spoke as well, leaving me hopeful that the public had spoken its mind quite clearly with the help of local organizations like Leadership Counsel in Days in the Valley. While I'm frustrated that since AB 1436 has been replaced with equally poor AB 3038, I have to be here again and ask once more for an urgency ordinance securing housing during the pandemic by protecting people from eviction, a rent, mortgage, and utility assistance program, and a fully funded right-to-legal counsel program for tenants facing evictions. As a young person who has been in Bakersfield my entire life, I've learned about our community. I've seen from past restaurants and people not wearing masks how little our community cares about stopping the spread of COVID-19. I've seen that our elected officials never prioritize lower-income parts of town. However, if people are not provided with secure housing during this time, who will be most impacted? The residents in low-income areas that are never prioritized by their local government. How will people facing evictions be able to continuously social distance, quarantine, and take other necessary precautions to stop the spread of the virus? If these families have children, how will they probably be able to learn via distant learning while facing housing struggles? I seriously hope you consider what your lack of proper protections will entail for our community. Few more. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that concludes public comment for this item.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Alsop, can you comment and provide some clarity, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I will attempt to, I'm a little confused by some of the callers here. I'm going to try to explain where things are at. The state legislature yesterday passed a bill known as 3088, which is what, the number that was mentioned by the callers. It was signed by Governor Gavin Newsom last night. That stops evictions through the end of the year until February, period. It does not allow your board, it specifically in section 1179.05, line A, subsection 1, specifically prohibits your board from addressing eviction moratoriums on your own until at least February of next year. Your board, as a reminder, regarding rental and mortgage assistance, recently authorized the expenditure of $5 million, joining in partnership with the city of Bakersfield, who is also providing $5 million in federal CARES Act money to be spent on rental and mortgage assistance, both in the city of Bakersfield and with your board's contribution, assistance outside, everywhere else outside the city limits of Bakersfield. Your board took the additional action recently to allow incorporated cities, cities like Arvin, cities like Delano, cities like Ridgecrest, or Tehachapi, or any other incorporated cities that we have here in Kern County, to utilize CARES Act money that your board provided to them. There's about $7 million total that was distributed, or that can be, I'm sorry, distributed to cities for use related to COVID-19. Your board provided those cities additional flexibilities to use that money for issues like rental and mortgage assistance. So in addition to the $10 million that's being provided toward this effort, incorporated cities have the ability to also pitch in and provide additional money toward that effort. Legal representation and the right to counsel, we talked about this at great length at the last meeting. There are groups in our community that offer that assistance, and we talked about it. Your board's provided $30 million for small business support. These are small businesses throughout our community. There are thousands of them across hundreds of industry that employ people in this community and give them jobs. Your board provided $30 million to those small businesses to assist them so that they can continue to keep people employed and working during this crisis. Your board has authorized a million dollars just recently to be provided to nonprofits. This nonprofit community in Kern County provides the underserved, the most needy in our community with services. Your board's providing some financial assistance to keep those nonprofits effective and operating. Your board has set aside and allocated money for PPE bulk purchase that we're providing not only to small businesses, but the most vulnerable in our community. People that lack access for that PPE, lack the funds to provide and purchase their own PPE. We are distributing PPE across our county. Thousands of businesses are impacted, thousands of, tens of thousands of employees of those businesses are being impacted, and thousands of people who are participants in programs like WIC and other many CAP-K related programs are receiving free PPE. We've set aside, your board set aside money and distributed money for food assistance. There are a vast number of things that your board has done over the last several months related to this pandemic and the use of CARES money, and I hope that covers everything that was mentioned.
Thank you very much, Ryan. I also believe that CAP-K has the capacity to use the money that we have given them for utility assistance. I fully expect CAP-K to come back to this board, keep us abreast of how the money is going, what they need, and what kind of flexibility this board needs to engage in in order to address these issues, those that are feasible and reasonable within our jurisdiction. So I know that we cannot impose a moratorium per the legislation signed last night. Can somebody speak to the legal assistance question that's being asked? I know that we have never done such a thing before in my tenure on this board, but it is a request that's being made, and if we could speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the board, the request that's being made today, and I think this is a new request, to utilize CARES Act money to fund or provide some financial support for legal assistance, right-to-counsel, as has been mentioned by a couple of the callers. Your board can certainly consider providing CARES Act money for that purpose. There are community groups, I cannot remember the name of, Madam Chair, I know that you do, the name of the group and the community that provides that legal assistance.
GBLA.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Supervisor Scrivner. And you certainly could, your board can certainly contemplate providing some financial assistance to that group specifically for these efforts if you so choose.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other comments? Counsel, would you like to add anything at this time?
Yes, thank you. I just, just a point of clarification, in the new legislation that was enacted, it's section 20, when we're referring to the inability to create an ordinance at this point in time until February of 2021, that's under section 20 of that legislation, and that is the section that enacts the Tenant Act. And what it has done is added various sections to the Code of Civil Procedure. And one of those sections, which is the one that Mr. Alsop indicated, is 1179.05, which speaks to the inability to adopt an ordinance at this time.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Colleagues, do you have any input or any response to what we've heard this morning before we close out this matter?
Motion to receive and file.
Okay. We have a motion to receive and file, and we have a second from Supervisor Couch. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Gleason.
Thank you. Thank you to the CAO team as well. Appreciate you guys. Item number 48 is the next item that we have on our agenda from the Public Health Services, Presentation on Skilled Nursing Facility Efforts During the COVID-19 Pandemic. We are prepared to hear your presentation.
Good morning, Madam Chair. I'm going to turn this over to Bryn Kerrigan for her presentation.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Bryn Kerrigan. I'm your Assistant Director of Public Health. With me this morning is Jared Levitt, our Infection Control Consultant for Skilled Nursing Facilities from Aspire Healthcare Consultants. The purpose of this presentation is to provide your board with an update on our efforts with our skilled nursing facilities, commonly referred to as SNFs. A SNF is a type of nursing home that provides short and long-term care needs for individuals. The California Department of Public Health, or CDPH, regulates skilled nursing facilities. Multiple skilled nursing facilities in Kern County either have or currently are experiencing COVID-19 outbreaks affecting some of our most vulnerable populations. Local SNFs have contributed 904 COVID cases in Kern County, 406 in healthcare workers, and 498 in residents. There are currently 100, I'm sorry, 1,118 individuals residing within Kern County SNFs, meaning that 45% of those residents have tested positive for COVID-19 at one point during this pandemic. There are 1,582 staff within Kern County SNFs, with 26% of those individuals having tested positive for COVID at one point during this pandemic. As of yesterday, Kern County has 29,324 COVID-19 cases. SNF-related COVID-19 cases comprise 3% of the total cases. However, it is important to note that SNF COVID-related deaths comprise 20% of the total Kern County COVID deaths, with 58 deaths to date. This highlights the severity of illness these most vulnerable individuals suffer. Additionally, many end up occupying vital hospital ICU bed capacity for extended periods of time. Seventeen of our 19 Kern County SNFs have either COVID-positive residents, healthcare workers, or both. Belacera in Ridgecrest and Ridgecrest Regional Transitional Care and Rehabilitation are the only Kern County SNFs without any COVID-positive cases. Two local SNFs, Delano Post-Acute and Valley View Care Center in Delano, have positive healthcare workers, but the disease has not been transmitted to any patients within these facilities. We would expect to see some positive healthcare workers as they are at risk for community transmission of COVID-19. However, if appropriate internal controls are used, as demonstrated in these two facilities, there should be very low risk for transmission from healthcare workers to patients. Early on, we were very vocal about a COVID outbreak at Kingston Healthcare Center here in Bakersfield. They are one of multiple SNFs to experience an outbreak early on in the pandemic and remain the deadliest outbreak of all of our local SNFs. We continue to see outbreaks occur within our local SNFs. Currently, the following SNFs are experiencing concerning increases in positive cases within their facilities, and we are watching them closely. Golden Living Center Shafter. Over the last week, the facility saw an additional three residents and five healthcare workers test positive. Their total positivity is 45 healthcare workers and 74 residents. Rehabilitation Center of Bakersfield, over the last week, the facility saw an additional two residents and three healthcare workers test positive. Their total positives are 81 healthcare workers and 78 residents. Evergreen Arvin Healthcare, over the past last, over the last week, the facility saw an additional three healthcare workers and seven residents. Their total positive cases is 25 healthcare workers and 50 residents. And Brookdale, over the last week, the facility saw an additional nine healthcare workers and eight residents test positive. Their total positivity is 24 healthcare workers and 14 residents. Collectively, these four facilities are responsible for 17 deaths, with five occurring in the last week. Additionally, we have noticed some of the most basic and fundamental infection control practices lacking in our local SNFs, even during the middle of this pandemic. A lack of appropriate infection control practices makes the risk of transmission of COVID-19 or any other communicable disease significantly greater. Some of the more egregious issues we have found are as follows. It is a state requirement that each facility have a full-time dedicated nurse that has received appropriate infection prevention and control training assigned to the infection prevention role. During a visit at the Rehabilitation Center of Bakersfield, the facility placed a nurse in the infection prevention role who had no training in infection control. Additionally, when questioned, this nurse was not aware of all facility letters, which are the state's process for dispersment of requirements. Additionally, during an earlier visit to the Rehabilitation Center of Bakersfield, staff were observed wearing cloth face coverings within the facility, even though the facility had COVID-positive residents. A similar issue was noticed during a visit to Kingston Healthcare Center. During this visit, it was noted that all of the facility's supplies of N95 masks were locked in the administrator's office and staff could not access them. Because of this, staff were wearing face masks instead of N95s when caring for COVID-positive residents. State requirements dictate, excuse me, state requirements dictate that cloth face coverings are not considered personal protective equipment, or PPE, and should not be worn by healthcare providers. Furthermore, CDC dictates that healthcare providers should wear an N95 or equivalent respirator when providing care for suspected or known COVID patients. The administrator for San Joaquin Nursing Center initially refused to participate in serial testing out of fears of staffing shortages if they were confirmed positive. Serial testing is used to identify asymptomatic infections early as an attempt to prevent transmission of the disease. During an evening shift visit at Golden Living Center Shafter, days after a two-day onsite infection control review from CDPH, only two out of the six employees working during the shift completed their initial screening upon entry into the facility. The initial screening determines whether or not the employee has been experiencing any COVID-related symptoms and ensures the employee is not running a fever. This is a basic infection prevention strategy that is even required in non-healthcare-related industries, including hair salons. Another crucial infection control practice is cohorting or separating into groups those who are COVID-positive, negative, and suspected positive residents. Intermingling these groups may expose those who are negative to COVID-19. During a visit to the Rehabilitation Center of Bakersfield, residents were intermingling between the COVID-suspect areas and the COVID-negative areas. COVID-suspect patients are typically those who have been exposed to COVID-19 and should be isolated. Intermingling with individuals who are negative could expose negative individuals to COVID-19. These areas were only differentiated using tape on the ground and were not monitored by staff. Additionally, during a visit to Valley Convalescent Hospital, it was noted that COVID-suspect patients were being housed with COVID-positive patients. Just because an individual is a suspect does not mean they are positive and does not mean they will get COVID-19. However, when housed with COVID-positive individuals, it is very likely the COVID-suspect patients will become positive. Because of the vulnerability of our residents within skilled nursing facilities, the early outbreaks seen in SNFs within Kern County, and the continual lack of appropriate infection control practices within these facilities, your board has graciously dedicated CARES Act funding and devoted staff resources towards correcting and enhancing infection control processes within our local skilled nursing facilities. Specifically, your board has devoted CARES Act funding to hire an infection control consultant to assist in preventing the transmission of COVID within our facilities. This consultant, Jared Levitt, whom you will hear from momentarily, has a unique and extensive background in managing SNFs locally, as well as management experience within our local hospital system. Mr. Levitt is responsible for conducting regular onsite reviews with the local SNFs. Each onsite review results in a written report with corrective actions that are submitted to the SNF site administrator and the department. Mr. Levitt follows- Mr. Levitt is responsible for conducting regular onsite reviews with the local SNFs. Each onsite review results in a written report with corrective actions that are submitted to the SNF site administrator and the department. Mr. Levitt follows up with the site for implementation of the corrective actions. Additionally, the department has worked to develop a collaborative relationship with the regulator of the SNFs, CDPH. Previously daily, now weekly conference calls are held with the department, Mr. Levitt, CDPH's Bakersfield Office staff, and CDPH management staff in Sacramento to try to collaboratively address issues that affect our local SNFs. These calls remain active and productive. At the beginning of the COVID pandemic, CDPH required each SNF to develop site-specific mitigation plans. The mitigation plan contains six elements, which include testing, infection prevention and control, PPE, staffing shortages and contingencies, cohorting, and communication. CDPH and Kern County Public Health Services Department paramedics coordinated joint onsite initial reviews of each SNF's mitigation plans to ensure they were thorough and actively instituted within the facilities. A hotline was also established for the reporting of concerns regarding SNFs. As of August 25, 2020, there had been 35 calls received through the hotline, which had been investigated and addressed. Serial or regular testing of residents and healthcare workers within SNFs is required by the state. In an effort to expedite the serial testing process in Kern, the department deployed a team of nurses to 13 of our local SNFs to conduct testing of their staff. Our team tested 2,477 individuals. During times of staffing shortages within our local SNFs, the department coordinates with local ambulance companies and the state to provide strike teams or temporary staffing to help with these shortages. Specifically, a total of 42 individuals made up of EMTs, paramedic, and nurses stayed for three and a half weeks to help at Kingston Healthcare Center. Additionally, our very own Liberty Ambulance from Ridgecrest provided a strike team of three individuals for two weeks to Valley Convalescent Hospital. The department provides PPE to SNFs when they are having supply issues. To date, we have provided 3,669 face shields, 48,400 gloves, 8,582 gowns, 40,405 N95 masks, and 21,050 face masks. These efforts have had positive impacts within our local SNFs. Madam Chair, with your indulgence, I'd like to invite Mr. Levitt to the microphone to review successes we have seen within our SNFs since our interventions.
Thank you. This was the consultant we recently brought on, Mr. Constantine. Okay, very good. Thank you, welcome, and I'm happy to see that you look healthy.
Trying to stay so. Madam Chair, members of the board, it's my pleasure to speak to you today. Over the past 36 days, I've been in all 19 county skilled nursing facilities performing an initial assessment. I met with the leadership teams, reviewed infection control practices, staffing, PPE, supply and utilization, cohorting of the residents, and the general safety of this very vulnerable population. The facilities were divided into groups for purposes of prioritizing attention and resources to assist and hold facilities accountable. For those facilities that required the most attention, I've provided leadership training, helped in the creation of good policies, implemented appropriate procedures, instructed in PPE application, have sent corrective action plans, and followed up where needed. My efforts and the efforts of Kern County Public Health Services personnel have certainly slowed the spread of the disease in Kern County skilled nursing facilities, though much work remains. I commend this board and its leadership in attacking this difficult disease. At your direction and with great speed and skill, Kern County Public Health Services Department pivoted into previously uncharted roles where a need existed. Because of your leadership and the leadership of public health, I am not seeing as many of the egregious gaping holes in infection control practice that existed previously in the early months of the disease. While a few of those egregious issues persist and we're handling them as they arise, I am seeing more issues where consistency and follow-up are required. Ms. Kerrigan has highlighted some of the noted issues, and I'll touch on some of these positive instances that we've seen in facilities. I've worked with CDPH to ensure COVID-positive patients have a location where they can be admitted safely. Kern River Transitional Care has done an excellent job of maintaining appropriate infection control protocol and has invested in ensuring safe practices. The physical facility layout lends itself to ensuring these safe admissions. It has a smaller unit with physically separated entrances from the remainder of the population. There are separate parking lots and entrances for the staff. This type of setting provides both staff and residents with the best safety. We've also worked with other facilities to ensure safe admissions. Certain facilities that historically struggled with infection control have greatly improved in needed areas. Kingston, Windsor Post-Acute Care Center, Bakersfield, and The Orchards have worked with Kern County Public Health and CDPH many times at the direction of those entities to effectively mitigate the previous spread that occurred. Those facilities are now effectively cohorting, have appropriate stock of PPE, infection preventionists, and appropriate staffing levels, and are on track to maintain safe environment for staff and residents. Other facilities that have performed admirably in limiting the spread of this disease within the walls of the facility are the Ridgecrest facilities, Belacera and Ridgecrest Regional Transitional Care Unit, the Delano facilities, Valley View Care Center, Delano Regional and Delano District Skilled Nursing Facility, Height Street, Kern River Transitional Care, Rosewood Health Facility, and San Joaquin Nursing Center. While much progress has been made, as Ms. Kerrigan noted, there is considerable work to be done, and we'll touch on next steps. I commend your board and Kern County Public Health Services Department. Because of your leadership, the leadership of Matt Constantine and Bryn Kerrigan, Kern County Skilled Nursing Facility residents are safer today than at the beginning of the outbreak. Thank you.
As Mr. Levitt has stated, while we have seen improvements, we still have a lot to work to do in our SNFs. As some of the highlighted issues earlier in this presentation indicate, if our engagement within these facilities sunsets, infection control procedures will become lax, which will put these most vulnerable members of our community at significant risk. Mr. Levitt will continue his onsite visits at facilities to ensure they continue to use the best internal, or I'm sorry, infection control practices to identify any deficiencies early on. Mr. Levitt will also continue to work with local SNFs to ensure they remain a safe option for patients who need to be discharged from the hospital but still require ongoing medical care. Mr. Levitt will work with local SNFs to develop plans to safely reintroduce visitation within the facilities, which adds an additional layer of accountability within the facilities and also allows the SNF residents to see their families. Mr. Levitt will continue to be a resource to our local SNFs, offering his infection control expertise to leadership within the facilities to ensure they are maintaining the strongest infection control practices. And Mr. Levitt and the department will continue to try to further our alignment and collaboration with CDPH, the regulatory agencies for the SNFs. Madam Chair and members of the board, that concludes the presentation from the Public Health Services Department. Mr. Levitt, Mr. Constantine, and myself are available for questions at this time. Additionally, your board-appointed Skilled Nursing Facility Accountability Officer Georgiana Armstrong is here and would like to provide a presentation regarding her efforts and findings related to her work with skilled nursing facilities.
Thank you for your presentation. Ryan, are you punched in to speak now, or was that from earlier? Thank you.
My mask is caught on my earrings. Oh, dear God.
That's the story of my life with the mask and the earrings. It's a nightmare.
I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay. I totally sympathize, I assure you.
As if I wasn't nervous enough.
I know, I know. Welcome. Just your luck. Welcome. It's nice to see you looking healthy. Thank you for everything you're doing during this pandemic. On many fronts, you have been present, active, and super engaged, so thank you. I hear your name a lot. So, welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by clarifying my approach to the project that your board assigned to me. The direct benefit to our constituents within skilled nursing facilities will come from public health and the efforts of Mr. Levitt. I don't have the expertise or experience that they do, and I don't believe there is anything I personally can do to influence outcomes in our nursing home, right here, right now, during this pandemic. So I struggle to figure out what could I do to bring benefit to this project? And what I've decided to do, what I've done to this point, is to step back and to review a wide array of publicly available documents, official reports, media interviews with subject matter experts, listening to briefings, conference calls. I have a stack of paper this thick that I've gone through in an attempt to try and identify systemic issues that may have contributed to the situations in our skilled nursing facilities, and if so, how they might have affected skilled nursing facilities in Kern County. And if we could, what could we do locally to address those issues? Because above and beyond the virus itself, something has gone terribly wrong in our skilled nursing communities. As outcomes have varied between countries, regions, and even homes within a given community, there must be some variable, something that we perhaps could find and improve, and what could be done beyond what is already being done by public health and Mr. Levitt. As their success requires continued and ongoing coordination with the skilled nursing facilities and CDPH, I have deliberately maintained distance from their efforts because I did not want to cause friction or any kind of awkwardness in their interactions with the agencies and the facilities. So, they have not reviewed or approved the report I'm about to give to you. This is my development in direct response to your board. Okay, I'm going to start with just a few brief slides to give you some sort of idea as an overview of what we're talking about when we're talking about this industry. This is big business, and probably much larger than most of us realize. For an easy but imperfect reference of scope, 2016, Hollywood industry revenue was estimated at $11.2 billion. A year earlier, in 2015, estimated revenue for nursing facilities was $156.8 billion. This is very large industry. The industry has grown steadily. There may be some current variations due to COVID-related deaths and persons perhaps hesitant to enter a skilled nursing facility or returning to a family member when possible. However, growth is expected to continue as the U.S. population, primarily the baby boomers, continue to age. The industry has transitioned from what used to be predominantly nonprofit or faith-based organizations to what is now primarily for-profit. As shown on this slide, in Kern County, six of our facilities are nonprofit nursing homes. The cost for these services is considerable, and most Americans lack the personal finances to cover the expense, which has led to a norm where nursing home costs are largely funded through public dollars, 64%, through the Medicare and Medicaid programs, which are administered by the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, referred to as CMS. In very general terms, Medicare funds nursing home stays, nursing home costs for shorter-term stays, and Medicaid, which is referred to as Medi-Cal in California, provides funding for longer-term care. There are two points I'd like to make about these program reimbursements. The first is that the Medicare reimbursement rates are higher than what is provided for Medicaid. Medicaid payments are estimated to cover approximately 80% of resident care costs. It is illegal for facilities to discriminate based on payment sources, but unlawful discharges have been reported in some media forums. I do not have specific information of this occurring in Kern County, nor have I researched this topic because it is beyond the scope of my assignment from your board. However, the discrepancy between the rates of payment should be noted. The California Advocates for Nursing Home Reform, known as CANNER, also notes the fixed reimbursement rates from these programs act to eliminate free-market forces that would normally correlate higher-quality product with higher revenue. Except in the most dire and rare circumstances where a facility is deemed ineligible to participate in government programs, profits can be increased by reducing costs, even if that results in a lower quality of care. Regulatory oversight of nursing homes is through federal and state levels of government. In California, oversight is shared by the three agencies listed here. You will note the focus of two of these California agencies is primarily on auditing financial reports and issuing payments. As Ms. Kerrigan stated, it is CDPH, California Department of Public Health, that is tasked with the licensing, issuing of operational guidance, conducting inspections to uphold standards to ensure quality of care. In May 2018, the California State Auditor submitted a report on state agency oversight to the Joint Legislative Audit Committee. Directly quoted from the report, quote, "Significant deficiencies related to the quality of care that California nursing facilities provide have persisted for more than a decade." And if you'll note, the title of the care is "Skilled Nursing Facilities: Absent Effective State Oversight, Substandard Quality of Care Has Continued." This report intended, included multiple findings related to oversight, primarily how some of these departments could improve efficiencies. But as it relates to care, some points are presented here for your board. CDPH is tasked to conduct audits for state standards, and separately, on behalf of CMS, on federal standards, as required for nursing home participation in Medicare and Medicaid. Per the state audit, CDPH has prioritized federal recertification inspections over state relicensing inspections. Federal inspections do not address some state requirements. Some federal requirements are less stringent than the states, including nursing staff training. The report notes citations are often not issued timely as required by law, and sometimes as long as six months after deficiencies are identified. The state auditor repeated a recommendation from 2010, that California penalty amounts are too low, have not been adjusted for inflation, and significant discounts are offered if citations are paid within 30 days. The report also stated citations are not consistently issued when deficiencies are identified. In this way, perhaps it is that financial incentives to provide high quality of care to avoid financial penalties may be less than robust. Other standing, other longstanding and serious deficiencies that have been noted by industry experts and advocates, the two cited most often are infection prevention deficiencies and failures to meet minimum staffing standards, which rarely result in citations. As per a Government Accountability Office report of May 2020, more than 80% of nursing homes were cited for infection prevention deficiencies from 2013 to 17, with half of the homes described as having persistent problems that were cited across multiple This echoes what your county staff and Mr. Levitt have seen here in Kern County. During a pandemic, leading up to a pandemic, infection prevention deficiencies are known and talked about again and again, and yet they continue year after year after year, and they are rarely cited. And when cited, the penalties have been considered too low to make an effect. Regarding staffing requirements, the federal staffing requirement is not numerically defined. It is more as needed to provide appropriate level of care. California has a numerical standard, which is set at 3.5 hours of direct patient care per day. It was temporarily waived during the pandemic, but now it is back to the 3.5. There is low pay, common for direct care staff, which often means that staff may work at multiple facilities for financial survival, which has been identified as an issue that may have contributed to the spread of infection within and between skilled nursing facilities, bringing both heightened risk of exposure and infection to staff, especially when appropriate PPE was unavailable or locked in an administrator's office, or distributed with inadequate training. The low pay also contributes to higher level of turnover, meaning training must be continued The low pay also contributes to higher level of turnover, meaning training must be continually repeated to ensure that the staff fully is trained to meet the requirements for their own safety and for the quality of care for their residents. Free-market forces perhaps might spur more attractive compensation for direct care workers if reimbursement rates correlated to quality of care and/or greater certainty of financial penalties for failing to meet standards. And then, against this backdrop, the coronavirus emerged, the pandemic spread, and layered upon long-noted weaknesses, we had what we have all observed to occur. Many of the issues experienced community-wide, combined with the lack of preparedness to respond to pandemic, exacerbated the longstanding problems, which has led to a catastrophic and traffic and tragic impact to residents within nursing facilities, where approximately three to four of every 10 COVID deaths in the United States have been within a demographic that is less than 1% of the population and within facilities under the direct regulatory authority of federal and state agencies. And then, the CARES money. The money began to flow. When the federal government released CARES funding for COVID-19 response, a substantial allocation for nursing homes was included. These funds were awarded without regard to the financial strength of the facility, their history of quality of care, or whether an organization was under penalty for financial abuse of government programs. The funding was released with, quote, "no strings attached." While some facilities, no doubt, allocated CARES funds to mitigate COVID impact, there was no requirement that the money be used for PPE, testing, additional staff, or hazard pay for staff. Additional funding has been provided by the state through a temporary reimbursement rate increase, and a second federal allocation of approximately $5 billion more is expected to be released shortly. As the pandemic spread, CDPH began issuing guidance to nursing homes. They did this, as Ms. Kerrigan mentioned, through something called All Facility Letters, AFLs. The quantity and cadence of the guidance may have contributed to some confusion within the facilities, as county staff continued to observe uncertainty as they visited some nursing homes. While CDPH required each facility to develop a COVID mitigation plan, that plan was required by June of 2020, well into the spread of the pandemic. In March 2020, CMS directed the in-depth site inspections normally done on facilities to be halted, and instead to focus primarily on infection control. As county staff began working with the nursing homes and later with CDPH on mitigation plan site visits, there was a general reluctance observed for CDPH to issue citations. Per CANNER, 1,700 targeted infection prevention surveys were done. There were zero facility citations listed. And just speaking with your county staff of the facilities here in Kern, if there were that many infection prevention deficiencies noted in our small outreach, in 1,700 visits, zero citations were issued, and as it turned out, that was by design. CDPH has instead adopted an approach more focused on consulting and coaching, and that trend seems to be continuing. In August, they have issued what was first called controversially, with much controversy, adopt a sniff, that now the regulators will spend up to 30% of their job time consulting and coaching. These are the regulators who are sent there to enforce standards, and they will be placed in a coaching and consulting role. There is some pushback reported in the media from the staff who see conflict of interest, but the state is going to do what the state is going to do. Another issue that caused great concern has been that the ombudsman and the family visits were restricted as nursing homes implemented a lockdown approach to minimize the spread of infection. This eliminated a critical layer of oversight on the quality of care provided to residents. While ombudsman access to nursing home has been restored, family visits remain an issue. Some advocates see that the prolonged isolation these residents are experiencing as a major threat to their well-being. And I can tell you that many of the calls received by the county have been from family members. These calls have been emotional. These people have been desperate to visit their family, and they have been very emphatic that from the visits they've been able to have online remotely, they have observed a decline in their, in the well-being of their loved one. Loss of appetite, loss of weight, more confusion, and sometimes even saying, "My mother and my father is giving up hope. They say they're never going to see me again, and they're giving up hope." This is a critical issue that affects not only skilled nursing residents, but their families. And I would also like to say that when the ombudsmen were allowed back into the, into the facilities, County of Kern Public Health Department was the one that fit-tested our ombudsman, provided the PPE, and trained them in dawning and dophing. That was not done at the state level. Kern County made sure our ombudsman was ready to return to the facilities as soon as it was authorized. So when Kern constituents are faced with selecting a nursing facility, it is extremely important to research options, going beyond visiting a facility, picking one that's convenient and seeming clean. A tool developed by CMS is the five-star rating system that can be found online by Googling "nursing home compare." The system rates and then ranks nursing homes against other facilities within a given state. The highest ranked 10% are rated with five stars, the lowest 20% with one star, and the remaining 70 are rated two, three, or four stars in approximately equal proportion. The ratings are based on three dimensions: health inspections, staffing, and quality measures. And these scores are then aggregated into an overall rating. The health dimension is based on deficiencies found during the annual onsite inspections, combined with substantiated findings from complaints, investigations in the most three-year period. Staffing is based on registered nurse hours and also total direct care staffing hours, which are RNs, practical nurses, and nurses aides, per resident, per day. Advocates would want you to know that the quality component, which measures physical and clinical measures as reported by the facilities to CMS. You'll note that in that measure, the quality measure, there tend to be more stars for that reason. There are two designations that merit additional attention here. Oh, sorry. And that is, when this symbol is signed, this abuse citation, it is a hand in a red circle, and it means the facility has recently been cited for resident harm or potential harm due to abuse or neglect that may be physical, mental, or sexual in nature. The yellow triangle is what is shown as a special focus facility, and it indicates a sustained pattern of serious problems well above industry averages. These facilities are subject to more frequent inspections, escalating penalties, and potential termination from the Medicare and Medicaid program. Less than 1% of nursing homes nationwide have this special focus facility designation. In Kern County, one nursing home is designated as a special focus facility and has been designated since 2017 with the status reconfirmed as of July 2020. Four facilities are noted with abuse citations. Eleven, these 11 nursing homes in Kern have been rated with one or two stars, meaning that they are among the lowest-ranked statewide. The four one-star facilities, plus Kingston, which does not have any stars because it is a special focus facility, have received health citations well above the California average, ranging with Kingston at 291% of the California average to Valley View Care at 172% of the state average. Of the seven two-star facilities, health citations range from a high of 209% for the Orchards to the lowest of 60% for Kern Valley. The Kern facilities with the highest number of citations based on resident complaints are San Joaquin Nursing with 45, Kingston with 38, and the Rehabilitation Center of Bakersfield with 26. There is no California average information available, so I have no way to compare that Of the Kern facilities rated from average to well-above-average, meaning three to five stars, health citations range from a high of 14, which is 104%, for Rosewood, to a low of three, which is 22% for Delano Regional. And within this group, citations based on resident complaints range from zero for Hyde Street to 13 for Ridgecrest Regional. With genuine hope that this pandemic will spur changes so that nursing home residents are better served, I have a few recommendations for your board's consideration. But first, one quick message for nursing home and assisted living center residents. If you received a stimulus payment earlier this year, that money belongs to you. It is illegal for a nursing home or living center to require the funds be signed over to them. It doesn't matter what program funds your care, this money is yours and yours alone. And I emphasize this because the IRS went so far as to issue that clarification based on reports, not necessarily here in Kern, but based on reports that this was occurring. If your stimulus payment has been taken unlawfully, the Kern District Attorney's Office wants to hear from you. The link to file a complaint is shown here, and if that link is confusing, you can also contact us directly through our call center. That number is 661-868-0555, or by email at phcares@kerncounty.com, and we will get you connected with the right information forms and the right people. That is the intake line and phone, email and phone number that we have established. That, that resource is also available for residents to report any issues to us or concerns related to COVID, their family members, or staff. So what, what can we do locally? It seems that much of the problems that, that would create additional incentives for facilities to provide the level of care that standards would suggest are needed are at the state and federal level, so there's not much we can do. However, we are closest in Kern County to the constituents. And what I would suggest we look at are ways to empower constituents, to, to provide them with greater awareness to enable informed decision-making. I have up here the contact information for the Long-Term Care Ombudsman Program. This is a longstanding program. It was actually created during the Reagan administration due to public outcry for bad conditions in nursing facilities at that time, and they are advocacy groups on, on behalf of residents in skilled nursing facilities, as well as assisted living facilities, day programs, and congregate living and intermediate care facilities. They assist with complaints, attend care plan meetings, and provide other legal assistance. Their program is funded through a federal base rate plus a state supplement, which is bounced through to them by the Kern Agent and Adult Services Program. It actually goes to GBLA because they administer it on behalf of the county. The funding has gone through great variations and has remained very low. Back in 2010, it was cut dramatically and remained low until this current fiscal year. It's been restored to the pre-cut levels, which has allowed the ombudsman program to grow from what has long been one and one-half full-time, one and one-half-paid staff to now four, to provide assistance to 4,000 constituents in nearly 150 facilities over 8,000 square miles. In discussions with the ombudsman on what would be needed to provide the level of care of services as needed, she advised that if she had four case managers, four additional case managers, some computer tablets for training the volunteers upon which they rely on, some addition with public outreach, and some IT support. They do have a website, however, that was created one year during one cycle of their funding. She does not have the internal IT expertise or ongoing funding to make sure that website is updated with current links as needed. My suggestion to your board, and I'm going out here on something that I really do not have expertise on, but I know that we have a program in Kern County where motels pay a certain fee that supports environmental health, site inspections, and covers those costs. Perhaps it could make sense if somehow the industry in Kern County that is here for profit could make some sort of contribution to maintain and sustain the Long-Term Care Ombudsman Program, which is when the CARES money runs out and the extraordinary level of oversight being done at the county goes away. This program is the thin red line for our constituents. Perhaps the county could consider leveraging existing county staff IT expertise to support the ombudsman website so that it could be what it is intended to be, a one-stop shopping place for constituents to file a complaint, get information on their bill of rights, get access to facility inspection records, and also to review investigation reports. Perhaps we could, through GayGov, assist this program with doing the public outreach to build awareness so constituents are aware of this program and its capabilities. And if the ombudsman program is able to get additional staff, they will outgrow their office space, which has currently been donated to them by GBLA. If there is unused available space within a county facility that could be allocated, perhaps that's something else that might be considered. Sorry, I was supposed to move ahead with the screen, and I didn't. The last one, the last recommendation I have is similar to the kind of disclosure that homeowners are required to make when they sell a home. Perhaps the county could consider, through our planning and permitting process, adding a requirement that would mean the nursing homes fully disclose in writing, in clear language, their current, their current CMS rating during the resident admission process with responsible party signature to acknowledge receipt. This would allow constituents to make fully informed decisions and spur discussion how any identified deficiencies could be addressed to meet their needs. And county council is researching the feasibility of this project as of the last few days. For ongoing other activities that we are doing, we are working with Mary Bedard's office to ensure that these constituents are not disenfranchised in the upcoming election. I will support as I can for Mr. Levitt, anything that I, that can be done for the family visits. We will continue to monitor the, the call center and the, and the emails that come in. Well, fairly lengthy, the report that I gave you today was the briefest summary I could do. And what I plan to also submit to your board in the next two weeks is a written report, which will go into more depth on some of the technical aspects that I've, that I've just basically brushed on here, and also provide the data sources. Beyond that, I really don't know what direction your board wants me to take on this, because, as I've said, I am not, I am not truly the expert. It is truly public health and Mr. Levitt who are making the difference, along with the direction that your board has taken. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. Supervisor Magrath.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to my colleagues for embracing our engagement in the skilled nursing facility issue and its oversight. I just can't thank my colleagues enough. I can't thank staff enough for doing this, particularly Georgiana and Jared and Matt and Bryn. People's lives have been saved from the efforts that we've, we've initiated, and I just can't thank you guys enough, and I can't thank my colleagues enough for fully embracing the opportunity to do this. I wanted to just talk for a moment about, and have us talk as a group about, what can we do next? And we have been blessed with the opportunity to And we have been blessed with the opportunity to spend CARES dollars and other dollars, federal money that went through the state and has now come to us, plus the federal money that came to us. We've been blessed to be able to make some decisions about how to use that money in a fashion that's different than, I think, every other county in California. And that's due to the commitment of my colleagues to be able to say that they were willing to do that. It would be much easier to spend that money on ourselves and spend that money paying for the typical things government does, but here, and in so many other ways, we've decided to spend it in a way that is really making a difference, and I'm so grateful to you guys for that. So it seems to me that Mr. Levitt provides the track of our oversight of these facilities, and that he's there to help them comply. He observes, he recommends, he's the good guy. And that Georgiana is there to observe and report your findings. You're the bad guy, sometimes. And I understand why we have two different people performing those functions. And I'm grateful that both of you are willing to adopt that profile for us as we go forward. It's, this is dangerous, compelling, exhausting, very difficult work that you guys are both doing, this dawning and doffing, putting on these clothes, taking them off. I don't know what your family's expecting to do before you walk in the house in the evening in the garage, that you have to strip down and be hosed off in the backyard before they let you in. I don't know what it is, but you're all doing very difficult work, and I'm grateful for that. But following these two roles, I think, is important that we continue this. What worries me is that while we have decided to use our, the funding that we've received in this very unique way, that funding doesn't last forever. So there will come a time that we're going to need to hand this off to the state, because the state is the oversight, is the regulatory agency here. But it worries me that if we weren't doing this, what oversight and regulation would there be? And it worries me that there, in effect, is no or very little oversight and regulatory action taking place. So I would hope that we could move towards preparing a report that we deliver and offer to deliver in person to the governor, to the whatever committee there is, to the California Department of Public Health, to our legislators, anyone who will listen, this is our report. This is what we have found. And Ms. Armstrong, particularly in your presentation, you had some really, really salient, excellent points that weren't on the page. As you would turn from one page to the next, you would make just a great observation, and it wasn't there. So I want to, either I need to hear it again and make better notes, or I want to ask you to help us with some of those observations or recommendations, because they're really vital, I think, to this. But at some point, we need to hand this back to the state and say, what are you going to do about this? And I don't want to make them look bad, I don't want to be their adversary, I want to help them help everybody, because our observations here go way beyond just Kern County. So I'm hopeful that we can come to a point that we prepare a package that we can hand to them that says, from both perspectives, from Mr. Levitt's work and Ms. Armstrong's work, what are our observations and what are our recommendations? I would like to see us, and I'd like, Matt, for you to have an engaging conversation with us about this, and Jared, and Georgiana, and Bryn, and if need be, our county council. I'd like to see us post the star rating and the red hand and the yellow yield or halt sign before you, I'd like to see that on the window next to the front door of every facility. If I can go into everything from a McDonald's to a, well, when I used to be able to go to a sit-down restaurant, if I can, if I have that there, why don't I know that before I let my loved one, my very, very vulnerable loved one, go into a facility like this? So I'd like to see us, at least on the local level, making sure that those five-star rating and those that are in jeopardy, whatever that other term was, but the red hand and the yellow sign there, I'd like those to be posted. Is there anything that you've come across that tells us there's somewhere else that's doing that, or any reason why we cannot do that? Do you have a recommendation telling us why we shouldn't do that?
Well, I know that they are required to post it, and there are some requirements that say it has to be a certain font, certain size, but it's not out on the front door. It's not a prominent thing, as we would become accustomed to on restaurant standards. And one other thing about restaurants, if it doesn't have an A or a B rating, it's going to be shut down, right, Matt? I mean, we're not going to go into a D or an F, where it's business as usual.
So that, the font size, the idea about telling patients, residents, when they're in the admission process, before they sign on the dotted line, here's what this facility is known for, I like that idea, but for everyone else, including the public, to see it, I appreciate that. Georgiana, what are your thoughts, Matt?
Supervisor Maggert, through the chair. Yes, it would require a local ordinance. As your board did back in 2006, you created a local ordinance that required the posting of a grade in a food facility. That was a locally-driven issue, that other counties had developed similar programs, but you created your own here locally. So it would require an ordinance to do this, but certainly within your ability. And I think Mr. Levitt has some additional information about what is required.
Mr. Levitt.
Supervisor Maggert, through the chair, thank you. There is a state requirement, I believe it's in Title 22, which governs skilled nursing facilities, and as Georgiana mentioned, the requirement does provide some flexibility, as I understand, and it's been a couple of years since I looked at it, but I believe it requires that it be posted in a conspicuous location, visible to the public, and in a certain font size. And, you know, there's very specific requirements about, that it has to actually have the star symbol of the stars in the number, and what font it is. And I believe that's Title 22. As Mr. Constantine stated, if you wanted to go beyond that, and the board have it placed literally on the front door, as he recommended, that would be something your board could do.
I'd like us to explore, colleagues, the process by which we could do that, to make sure that there is no question, as you reach for the doorknob to open the front door of this place, you will see this place has a one, two, three, four, or five out of five stars, and these other sanctions that are available. I would like to see us do that, as well as make sure it's, Mr. Levitt, is it, and Ms. Armstrong, is it currently the case that that information must be presented to the potential person being admitted into the facility? Or is that not necessary today?
Supervisor Maggert, through the chair. I don't have specific knowledge on that. There are specific requirements for admission documentation that's required upon each admission that the responsible party or the resident must sign. Whether the star rating is included in that material, I'm not certain.
To the best of my knowledge, that star rating disclosure is not required.
So if it's possible to do that through a local ordinance, I would like us to discuss whether or not we are okay with that. I'm inclined to do that unless somebody gives me a compelling reason not to. It better be really compelling. I think we should, I think we should do it, in both instances, both at admission and at the front door. The issue of having the industry pay its own way, if you are, if you want to build a project, you have to pay some traffic impact fees, you have to pay for certain, there are certain costs that our community will bear, that we cause the developer of that cost to pay for. And I think using that same model to cause this industry to pay its own way with regard to sustaining this oversight beyond our CARES money, at some point, that ought to become their responsibility. Sustaining means to hold them compliant, and a means to sustain the Ombudsman, that's a great idea. Thank you for that. Ms. Armstrong, I think that's something we should also explore. Providing access to their family members, once they're a resident in the facility, I think that's vital. I don't know what your experiences have been, I, you know, we all have parents, and some of them are living, some of them are not. But the most compelling reason I made sure my mother was not alone was that, once she was alone, I could tell she was losing hope, and she was falling away from us, from the conversations as we were around her, when her family was gathered around her. But more often, when I was, or my sister were the only ones that came to the door and walked in, how she was just wasting away in a chair, and felt completely alone, and therefore had lost hope. That's what we, you know, that's one of the reasons people admit their families to places like this. And so if their families are being denied access to them, that's just vital. So what can we do locally to make sure that families have more access than they do? Do you have any recommendation for us about that, or is that something we must do at the state level?
Supervisor Maggert, through the chair. There are currently ongoing, in various capacities, onsite visitations occurring. I've witnessed those, as I've attended to many of the skilled nursing facilities. Often how that occurs is an outside visitation through the glass, typically in the lobby. And the resident will be seated in the lobby with a cell phone, and the family will be, you know, will be outside. Some facilities are providing that type of visitation, other facilities are not. The physical layout of the facilities varies greatly in allowing for that type of visitation. As we move forward, we do, it is vital, you know, and we agree that onsite visitation is a vital element of this issue. And there are things that you could do, such as, you know, an acrylic barrier between the resident and the family member, and social distancing and PPE. And as we move forward, those are the types of things that we want to push. It's a double-edged sword, because as you admit folks from the outside, you admit an avenue of infection. But we also understand the criticality and the importance of onsite visits.
Getting inside that room is vital. I watched a federal hearing a few weeks ago on this, and one of the main points that was made was that one reason that the incidence of complaints is falling is the rate by which the public is at the facility observing it is falling. And that, what that means, in effect, is that bad behavior, inadequate service being rendered by the facility is not seen, therefore it's not reported. I have a friend whose mother recently passed away in a facility, and she was not allowed to go see her mom while her mother was living. She was allowed, interestingly enough, to go into her mother's room after she died. If they let her in when she died, why wouldn't they let her in before she died? But when she went in, after her mother had died, she was shocked to see the state of the room. Her mother didn't have, I'm not going to say horrendous things here, she didn't have signs that she was personally neglected, but her room was a complete mess. You know, it just wasn't being, her care was not being administered in the way it should be, and that's because nobody got in that room to see, and believe me, this lady, I know her, she would have made sure they were doing it had she been able to see that before her mom died. So that, whatever we can do locally to assure that, I think we should, and I would like you to give us recommendations, and I want to hear from my colleagues, I'm almost done, colleagues, thank you for allowing me to speak on this for a moment. But I want to hear from my colleagues what recommendations they have, and then I'd like to have you guys come back to us with your recommendations and how we can implement those things.
Certainly.
One last thing before I turn it over to my colleagues, and that is, we have, although today, we have more capacity than we have need in our hospitals, that was not the case just a few weeks ago. And it will, like, is it not the case, Matt and Bryn, that the model still predicts that we are going to come to a point again, can you step forward, because that public can't see you shaking, nodding your heads, can you come forward to confirm what that model predicts as to what lies ahead for our hospital capacity?
Supervisor Maggert, through the chair, you're absolutely correct. The model is still predicting that we will exceed both ICU and regular hospital capacity due to COVID-19.
And that isn't just here, it's all throughout California, right?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, some people are taking the opportunity to presume that we are worse than every place else. Well, we have our problems, but we are by no means, you know, not ahead of this as far as we can be. So my concern is that there will come a time when hospitals will need to discharge positive patients, that means patients who have COVID, to a facility that's not inside that hospital. This is not the same as happened in New York. This is not pushing disease-infected patients into the midst of healthy patients to infect even more. So walk us through, please, what is the process by which hospitals here are trying to figure out where to discharge positive patients, and why some facilities are better suited for that than others?
Supervisor Maggert, through the chair. Mr. Levitt is working with multiple of our local skilled nursing facilities to ensure that they can safely admit patients that need to be discharged from local hospitals. A great example is Kern River Transitional Care, that has a specific unit that has completely separate entrances and exits, for this specific unit that they were working on licensing when the COVID pandemic hit. They have repurposed that area to be specifically a COVID-positive unit, where only COVID-positive patients are housed, and that then keeps them completely segregated from all other areas of that facility, therefore basically having no risk to the other patients within the facility. Mr. Levitt's been working with many other facilities that maybe aren't set up exactly in that way, but to have separate entrances and exits, where those areas where COVID-positive residents are are specifically marked, so there's no confusion by staff or anybody else within the facility, that that is a COVID-positive area, where they are practicing dawning and doffing of PPE appropriately, so that there is minimal risk to the other patients within the facility.
And what happens if we don't do this? If we don't find a safe way to discharge a COVID-positive patient into a skilled nursing facility?
Then those patients remain in the hospital and occupy a vital hospital bed.
So as we move through this process, I would like to hear from you, you know, with great assurance, how we're doing it in a way that protects innocent, innocent patients who do not, residents who do not have the disease from contracting the disease. I may have other comments, but that'll start it from now. I know my colleagues want to say something. Thank you for indulging my passion for this, colleagues.
Supervisor Maggert, thank you for your comments and leadership in this area. Supervisor Squibbner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, big thank you to staff, both from Public Health, and Ms. Armstrong just continues to demonstrate her talent and tenaciousness whenever she's given a task by this board or from other county departments. Over the course of my forty-plus years, I've had several different family members that have been in a variety of facilities, and you can certainly tell when you walk in, one that is well-maintained versus one that isn't. And as you dig deeper, I think as our staff has done, and Ms. Armstrong has done, you start to see even more things that are revealed that are going to either give you reassurance or are going to give you a lot of cause for concern. I am interested in these recommendations that Ms. Armstrong has provided to us. Mr. Constantine, I'd like to ask you some questions about these recommendations and process, as far as how we might go about them. When we regulate the restaurants, it was mentioned, the letter ratings that we have on the restaurants, we have developed a method where problem, problem facilities are visited more often, those that are good actors are visited less, and the fee structures and penalties are also designed in a way to compel folks and encourage folks to be compliant. And those that are playing by the rules, you know, doing everything right, we bother them a lot less than the ones that don't. And I think that that's been an effective strategy. And so if we were to step back and look at applying a similar kind of approach to these facilities, because as we can see by what Ms. Armstrong has provided, we have some in Kern that are doing very well, and we have some that are doing very poorly. And so I think that we should be encouraging those that are doing well, and then also trying to find ways to compel those that aren't doing well to do better. So would we be able to develop a county ordinance that could require these disclosures upon admission, as Ms. Armstrong had suggested, for the family or the response admission, as Ms. Armstrong had suggested, for the family or the responsible party when they are admitting either their loved one or perhaps someone's admitting themselves? The disclosures on the ratings, the rating system, the star rating system, and the, the other, the other, the red flags and the yellow flag, as well as putting it on the outside of the facility?
Supervisor Scrivner through the chair. I think we have a model to develop a similar system for skilled nursing facilities on publicly disclosing the state attributed rating scale. It sounds like there is some requirements now that it's displayed. In my limited involvement with actually seeing some of these locations, I've not seen that rating system displayed. So it's not prominent in my world.
Right.
So I think there is a model and the ability under a local ordinance, working with county council, to develop that and to just take the state system and prominently display it. We'd have to develop what's asked for and the enforcement capability, as we did with food facilities, to, in response to your second question about disclosing it upon admission, it sounds like Mr. Levitt's saying there is some ability or some requirement to do that. We, we would probably want to dig deeper into that. And that is at a level of oversight that would be far beyond what we're doing now. So we'd have to be very narrowly focused in developing additional requirements. I'd like to first see if that is actually required and is it being done? Perhaps if it's not being done, we can disclose that. Maybe that's a way to encourage compliance under the existing infrastructure. So I think we need to do a little bit more work, but I...
Sure.
Message is received.
Yeah, absolutely. I know we're, we're all going to have to dig into this a lot deeper and, and with council help to see what we would be able to do. As far as the Ombudsman support, right now, I think Ms. Armstrong, you said that there, there's, the Ombudsman is housed at GLA. Okay, so if we were to, if we were to develop some kind of a fee structure for these facilities, because I, I agree, you know, these for-profit facilities, if we were going to provide this additional oversight over them, then there would have to be some kind of fee structure in place. Clearly, we've been able to use CARES Act funding, which is one-time money, to do what we've done thus far, but we have no idea how long it's going to last and, and if we're even going to receive any more. And so in light of that, we're going to have to figure out some kind of a funding stream that would be able to sustain this. It's over and above all the things that you already do.
Yes, sir.
So that, so I would ask staff, I'm, I'm interested in us looking at how we would be able to put a program like that together. The, and I, I think it should be based, like we've been doing, on restaurants, et cetera, where the more problematic you are, the more often we're going to visit and the higher the, the fees or penalties, et cetera, would be versus the ones that, that are getting a good rating. And the, the housing of the Ombudsman, do you, is this something that we believe that we could take in-house in public health, where you have space available? Because I would like the idea of it being integrated into your department if we're going to move in this direction.
Yes, Supervisor Scrivner, I think we need to stabilize this whole Ombudsman approach. Give them a place to work from, give them the infrastructure they need, give them a website that's robust and accurate. I, I think that can be done with nominal cost. If we're going to build a program, we would throw that in there, but somewhere within the county family, I think we should find a place that these individuals can sit and give resources to, with one or two or several additional employees. If that makes that much of a difference from what Ms. Armstrong said, absolutely, we should just do it.
I, I think it's, that this, you know, there are, sometimes there are good things that can come out of a bad situation. I think that this, this has brought to light a lot of issues at these skilled nursing facilities that have been there for decades and decades and, but it just hasn't been something that, at least I've paid too much attention to, other than those times where I've had a loved one that was in a facility for a period of time and I, you know, I explained, you know, there have been, I remember as a, as a young, a real young kid going to see my great-grandma, and it was, it was always just, you know, this place, you know, this place doesn't smell good, you know, it just isn't a good, isn't a good situation versus other facilities, you know, later on in, in years where I've had other relatives in and said, this place is really nice. This seems, you know, this seems like a, you know, like a good facility. And so for all of us that are going to continue to have, I think, more and more folks that are entering these facilities with the baby boomer generation, et cetera, the, the need for these facilities is going to continue to grow. And I, I think that this would be a good time for us to take a good look and see if we in Kern County want to be much more diligent and provide a much better system and environment for our elderly than other counties have. And perhaps we could really show some leadership and be pioneers in, in doing something very comprehensive that's going to help to, help to better the quality of life of the folks that we love that are in these facilities. And so I'm on board with, with moving forward on this for staff to, to dig in and try to come back with, to us with some recommendations on some of the things that not only Ms. Armstrong has brought to light, but perhaps some other ideas that we might come up with in the meantime. So thank you all very, very much.
Thank you very much, Zach. Very well stated. Supervisor Couch.
Thank you. Ms. Armstrong, thank you for your presentation. I like the fact that you kind of started with just some direction, but I also like the fact that you're willing to tell us when you don't know something. And probably that you realize, I think, the more you learn, the more you didn't know about this, and certainly the more I don't know about it. It occurs to me, Mr. Constantine, maybe you're the best one to, and Mr. Levitt, thank you for your, for your work. I think you've done a great service for us just in the last month or so. I think I heard, I, by the way, I'm, I'm in favor of all, all the ideas I heard up here today. So, but now I want to talk about the process a little bit. It occurs to me that, I think you mentioned the rating system in the door would be an ordinance. I heard Supervisor Maggard talk about some potential fees. I'm assuming that's probably a separate ordinance if we were to, if we were to do that? Would that be correct?
Supervisor Couch, if the concept is to develop a program that would require the public posting of a state attributed rating system, there might be some nominal fees to do that and then kind of the process of what happens when they don't, so they would be linked for that piece.
I heard the fees being something that would support the Ombudsman or other programs.
So the inclusion of these other pieces could, could be added to it and costs associated with it, yes.
So I heard fees, I heard websites, I heard housing staff, I heard IT services, I heard rating or putting the rating out front on the door, a notice also during admissions potentially. That's a lot.
Yes.
And so I think this, not to slow this down at all, but I think this is a perfect subject to refer to one of our board committees to work with your staff, Mr. Levitt, Ms. Armstrong, county council, probably, and I don't, I, I'm sorry to say I don't remember who's on this one, but the Health and Human, excuse me, Health and Social Services Committee or an ad hoc committee that would like, that maybe would be formed just for this. I think it's important that you, in an ad hoc committee that would be subject to the Brown Net, because I think it's important now to not only allow or bring in those skilled nursing facilities, let them be part of this process, especially the ones that are the good actors, but also the public and allow them the, the ability to, to comment on what's being crafted before you bring them back. So we have some, we have that done before you come back and you have a mess on your hands potentially.
Supervisor Couch, I've provided you the lists of the committees. Thank you, Madam Clerk. It appears as though Supervisor Maggard and Supervisor Gleason are on that committee.
It's okay with me.
And Supervisor Couch, we have, public health has quite a bit of experience developing programs at a local level on regulating certain industries, be it massage or tobacco or food facilities, so we can certainly follow that same methodology. I like your idea of including both the regulated facilities and the public to help with that process, so we can bring you a comprehensive plan that's everybody's agreed to in advance and that we can have you provide direction.
Thank you. Those are my thoughts. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Couch. We have, do we have public comment? Kathy?
Madam Chair, we do not.
Okay, so no public comment on this matter. It appears as though we are wrapping up, so I'm going to close the public hearing, come back to my colleagues for further action, comment. We did have initially a receive and file, but I've also heard some referrals, so if I can come back to my colleagues for clear direction, I would appreciate it.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I would move to receive and file the reports. Thanks staff for their input and ask them to come back to us. We, I'm happy to discuss how long we should await this, but to come back to us with an idea about how to move forward with analyzing these recommendations, seeing if there are any others. Run that through this committee if that's the will of the board, and then, then bring it back to us.
Wonderful. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion. I, I don't know, I don't know yet whether we send it through the committee process or if we, or if we have staff, staff come back first and then we determine if, if that's what we want to do, at least with a preliminary, you know, 30,000-foot view of, of how we may move forward. And so I don't know, is that part of your motion to, to refer to the committee or what?
No, and I don't think that, I mean, I'm open to whatever you guys think about the committee, but this was born out of the committee that Supervisor Scrivner and I serve on because it directly affected at one point whether or not we could open our businesses again because we had this spike in cases. So that's how it, where it came from originally, so.
Yeah, I, and I appreciate that. At the same time, you know, this is something that I think is, we're going to want to continue to, to pursue beyond the, the COVID-19 pandemic, just to, you know, improve the quality of life for a lot of folks, I think, if we can engage here.
And Zach, also likely beyond the tenure of Supervisor Gleason, frankly.
Well, since these, yeah, since, I think, what is it, January 4th is his last day, so.
Are you suggesting to us that there will be life after COVID? I hope so.
We're banking on it.
I'm telling, that's what I'm telling my kids.
Well, does it make sense to keep that between the ad hoc committee that we have established between Supervisors Maggard and Scrivner?
I, I don't know that, I don't know that it is, that, you know, at this point, but I, I'll see what, I'd like to hear what the, what you two think about that. But I, I think at this point, having staff come back and give us sort of a framework for where they think we might move, and then we could look to create an additional ad hoc committee, refer it to one of the, one of the existing committees that we have or, or whichever direction we want to go. So I'll...
I appreciate the second, and I think that's a good idea to let staff come back to us with a recommendation.
Okay.
I'll support it, but let me tell you the reason I suggested the committee. I think there are so many details to this, and I'll give you one that comes to mind. If I have a loved one that's in a skilled nursing facility and I'm looking around and I see one with a star on the door, I might think that's a good thing, because when I was a kid, I used to get a star on my forehead because I'd done a good thing. But apparently you can get five stars. And if I visit one that looks okay and it's got one star, I might, I might think that's fine. So I'm interested, should it be a star rating? Should it be a letter rating? Should it be a one star with, with four empty ones next to it? I mean, I think there's, I think there are details, and that's just one, that sort of comes to mind under noticing, that not all the good ideas I think come out of the county administrative building, and if we allow the public some input on that, I think we might get some good ideas. Thank you.
Okay, very good. We have a motion and we have a second by Supervisor Scrivner, and I hear support for this motion, and it certainly makes sense to me. So we can cast our votes at this time, please, for the receive and file and direction that provided to staff.
The motion is approved. Four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Gleason.
Okay, very good. This brings us to the end of our AM session. We will return at 2:00 PM. We, under CAO, we will be considering 62 and 63 in closed session and under county council, item 64. We are adjourned.